Hey.
Hi, James. How are you?
Good. How are you?
So far so good. I'll see how it goes.
Is it?
Seven, number seven. Capital F, capital S.
That's true.
Okay.
You wrote your bike here.
Yeah.
I think that's so cool.
Thanks. Yeah, I wrote my bike most places.
Did that work?
No.
What did you say about next week? I'm sorry.
Oh, I said I wrote my bike most places.
We'll see how you do in January.
That's what I'm trying. It looks like it's working now. Yeah. Yeah, it's working. Oh, my. Thanks, Andy. Yeah, in January as well.
In January?
Yeah.
You told me where you come from.
Just South Troy. It's only like a mile.
Where is South Troy? Because I'm on the park in Washington.
Oh, yeah, further south.
Further south.
I live just behind the alleyway. Behind a fort over by where the old map center was at Sage Stone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right over there.
Over by Madison and Man.
Yeah, yeah.
When in high school when my best friends were up on Madison.
So, so you've been here since this.
Good evening, everyone.
We're starting.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the September meeting of Detroit Planning Commission. Start by taking attendance, Commissioner Kaminsky.
I'm present.
Commissioner Raff.
Present.
Commissioners Allen. Commissioner Jagan, present.
And unfortunately, Sarah Winger was unable to be present with us tonight, so one short. Anthony Moen, Planning Commission Chair, I'm also present. So we have a number of items on tonight's agenda, but before we turn to those, the code actually requires us to elect a chair annually, which a little bit over a year from when I was elected. And we've got some new members to the commission, so I was going to open it up, see if one of our anyone who's joined since my becoming chair would like to step up. I was going to open it up and see if we have anybody who would like to put their name in and see, take on the responsibilities of chair for the next year.
I would definitely put myself forward.
All right, I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, so going to vote to elect Ron Yagan as chair. Commissioner Kaminsky.
I support that if you're willing to do it. I don't know what to say. Therapy.
Oh, well, you know, talking with city staff, there's sometimes requirements of coming here to sign off on maps and things like that, which makes it a little bit easier for somebody who's works in Troy and is here during the day. So staff had asked if, you know, if I was interested in continuing or if I'd be interested in letting somebody else step up and I definitely think we could use some new blood to. I'm I'm happy to relinquish my duties in order to facilitate getting a timely signing of documents. All right, so going back to the vote, Commissioner Raff.
For anyone else.
Oh. I vote yes for Roddy.
Commissioner Spellin.
Am I able to vote?
Oh, yes.
On my.
You can choose not to if you're uncomfortable with it, but you can feel that you really need to.
I will abstain.
And I'll just point out that the rules just simply said that we can elect a member from our membership. You're perfectly entitled to vote for yourself, but I will vote yes. Thank you. The vote carries four zero with one abstention. So we're proud to welcome our new chair, Roddy Yagan.
Thank you.
Take it away.
All right, so we don't have meeting minutes, is that correct? To work through. So for next meeting will be from the August and in commission meeting and from September, this current meeting. Without the minutes to work through or approve, our next item would be consent. I only found these first couple. How many consent items did we have? Three. Yeah, okay. If.
There are four.
Okay. Okay, so we have PLPC 2022 0092 for 102 Fourth Street. I guess, should I go through all of them first? Yeah, all right. PLPC 2022 0053 for 806 through 14 River Street. PLPC 2021 0067 for 26 New Turnpike Road. And PLPC 2022 0001 for 520 Fifth Avenue. That's under Old Business. Is that a consent item? That's not the consent item. Okay, so I missed one somewhere. I'm still only finding three. Got it. PLPC 2022 0024 251 River Street. Have any members of the public come to speak on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, looking to the commissioners. Any, any discussion we'd like to have on these items?
I'm recusing myself from PLPC 2022 0053.
Okay.
Just make sure the switch is forward. It's right under your middle. Yeah, there you go. There you go.
I am recusing myself from PLPC 2022 0053 806 to 814 River Street because I am on the board of the Troy Community Land Bank.
Mr. Chair, what I would recommend you do is divide the consent agenda into two separate votes. The first, the three that are participating in, and then the fourth one where Suzanne.
Going back though, any discussion on those items? Okay, so let's let's group those as, as Andy just said, so outside of PLPC 2022 0053, correct? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, seconds. Second, moving to a vote. James. Suzanne. Anthony.
I vote yes.
And I will also vote yes. Okay. And then I'll also take motion for PLPC 2022 0053 to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, seconds.
I second.
Okay, moving to a vote, Bill. James.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay. Moving on to Old Business, we have.
Just a note. Roddy, in case any of those applicants for any of those applications are here in the room, that is it. Your applications are approved. Thank you. You don't need to stick around any further if you came here.
Excellent. Congratulations. All right, so our first item on Old Business was PLPC 2022 0001 520 Fifth Avenue. Struck. Okay. All right, removed from the agenda. Next Old Business item, PLPC 2022 0076 for 898 Second Avenue. Do we have the applicant? Or representative? Okay, thank you, Andy. It's either on the top or on the bottom, way at the end, like on the rear end of it. Yep, there you go.
Hello.
Yep.
Hello. Good evening. Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering Survey, and with me tonight is Jared George, who's part of the applicant, representing the applicant here, Troy Realty Partners. And we're here to update the board with regards to this project, which we were here last month to discuss. And this is a well now, I propose well now building at the corner of Second Avenue and 126th Street. And the address is 898 Second Avenue. Since we were here last month, we did attend a zoning board of appeals meeting earlier this month, two weeks ago, to obtain some area variances with regards to front setbacks. And we did secure those variants, those area variances. We also made a couple of modifications to the plan based on the comments that the board had last month. So we're here tonight to ask for site plan approval. As you can see, the front now does have an entrance from Second Avenue. In addition to having the entrance from the parking area on the northerly side. And there are some additional landscaping that we have in the rear of the building and also along the the front of the building. But those are pretty much the changes that we made based on those comments. So again, if there are any questions, Jared and I'd be more than happy to try to respond to those comments or questions. But I think that's, you know, I can go through, you know, the zoning and also the location, but I think everybody's familiar.
Okay, I know we also had discussion last, last meeting about the Troy Fire Department's concern on call volume. Was there any research done there?
Yeah, there was, and Jared, he'll present.
So I did have a discussion about, a discussion with Chief McMahon last Thursday. You know, he agreed that's a great redevelopment property and this part of of the city is underserved for medical, especially due to the demolition of Leonard Hospital. So he was in support. He, you know, just mentioned that, you know, it's a global issue of being short staffed. We did go through the fact that, you know, RPI, Mohawk, and Empire Ambulance also assist in Troy, so adequate capacity if necessary. Regarding the research we did, the Who's X Street well now that we do own had an average of 1.6% transfer rate. So 100 people averaged 1.6. So I did relay that message to the chief and he was appreciative of that. So very minor, but once again, underserved area of the city for medical. He agreed this is a great redevelopment project.
Turn it over commissioners to do, want to offer any comment or question?
Eric, do you have any comments from staff, including Chief McMahon or anybody else? Yeah, that was going to be another one of my comments again. You know, I brought this up last month, you know, not having a sidewalk on 126 here. Doesn't make any sense to me, you know, how is a resident who lives next door supposed to get to this urgent care facility, especially if it is intended to be used by the community? So, yeah, again, I.
Yeah, so, so there is sidewalk, existing sidewalk southerly side of 126th Street. And the, the northerly side of 126th Street, there's some rock outcropping once you get past the building. The building that's been demolished, as you go towards the building on the corner, it, there's a lot of rock cropping, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area. I just still would think that there would be a sidewalk in front of the facility here. There is, you know, there is a need to be able to walk into the urgent care facility, and so we would, I'll speak for just myself, I would like to see a sidewalk there.
Okay.
Before granting side, side plan approval.
Would that be something you'd be open to doing as a condition on approval?
Yeah, I would, I would be open to stipulating that. I would say that the curb extent, or sorry, the curb ramp there as well would need to be ADA compliant, you know, considering that this is a medical facility and that people there are going to have different levels of mobility, you know, needs to be a full-on ADA compliant curb ramp with you know, tactical warning strip and everything like that.
James, how, how far up and down the street were you envisioning?
They're responsible for adjacent to their parcel, you know, I'm not expecting them to go beyond.
I just didn't know if you wanted, or were thinking across the entire width of the parcel or not?
Yes, for the entire width of the.
Okay, so it would only be along the frontage of the, of the facility.
For the, for the width of the, of the property.
And it would be out in the city's right of way, so.
It would be just like this sidewalk is out.
Yeah, yeah, just like every sidewalk, you know, I understand the, the back and forth we have often about city right of way versus private property, but the reality of it is that adjacent property owners are responsible for the sidewalk adjacent to their property, so that's, that's what we look for, you know. I don't know about the planning commission before my time here, but going forward, every, every redevelopment will be responsible for making sure there's an adequate sidewalk there, especially for medical use.
And when you mentioned the handicap.
Yeah, I can't see from the detail of this, of this.
Yeah, it'll be.
Rendering, but yeah, you know, it should be ADA compliant, full tactical warning strip.
Yes.
Right, you know, right grade, and it should be going in both directions so they can cross both sides of the street. But it could be, you know, it could be the, the corner.
Grass.
Or it could be two separate, it doesn't matter to me. But, you know, just again, so people can get in and out from your facility, get along it.
So.
Can I ask you a question on what you're envisioning? Are you looking at another crosswalk coming across the street? Because if you have a sidewalk there and ends at.
Yeah.
If you're at the end of the property, it's just grass and then outcropping. You need a crosswalk to make it accessible. Are there?
We're just talking about their, their parcel now. There. I'm familiar with the outcropping. It's not, you know, I understand the, the argument, but we need sidewalks. And, yeah, here's, here's how they, they get built is when, you know, something is going in there that people are going to be walking.
We're not going to own it. We're not going to maintain it. Because I don't want to be responsible for a sidewalk to nowhere, and then somebody sues me.
Adjacent property owners are, are responsible for maintaining the sidewalk. Every, you know, outside of any one of our properties, we are responsible for, you know, shoveling that snow. It's the reality of owning a property in Troy.
If there's a sidewalk there, but if we're the only one with a sidewalk, no adjacent property owner is going to have a sidewalk in existence, right? We're the only one. I'm sorry. I apologize. I, what I'm suggesting is if we install the sidewalk in front of our property, and there's no sidewalk anywhere else on that side of the street, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. And I'm concerned about liability on me once that's installed.
Can you just clarify what your role is here?
I'm one of the principal owners of the Troy Realty Partners.
Okay.
My name's Thomas Burke.
Thomas, thanks. This is existing.
Understand my concern?
Yeah.
This is no more sidewalk, right?
Right.
So what happens when, you know, someone gets to that point, and then they can't go any further? Really don't, you really don't want to mid-block crossing because that's dangerous. I mean, you're inviting people into a situation. What do we, what aside some money?
We're talking about the need for a sidewalk on 126th.
Would, would the, would the commission entertain a payment in lieu of constructing the sidewalk?
That's something, you know, Aaron. Aaron. We're talking, Nick is asking about payment in lieu of building a sidewalk here. And I'd like your, your feedback on that as an engineer.
Is it, was it a staff comment? Is that what it was, the sidewalk?
This is my comment.
I would, I would happily accept payment in lieu of, in lieu of doing that work. I think there are more important sidewalk connections to be made in that area than a sidewalk along 126th Street. I generally support in putting new sidewalk in. We do require it of a lot of other developments. It's part of our city code to have sidewalk. They do have it for the more important connection along Second. I would, I would entertain it. I mean, it's really up to the board and the commission and what they, what they would like to, to see happen up there.
One, one of the things I'm considering here is, is this, talk about this outcropping or rock, rock face over there, and I'm familiar with it vaguely, you know, I know that it's there, but.
It's further on 120, 125th, it's really prevalent.
Right.
It actually limits a sidewalk connection from Second to New Turnpike.
But in this case, there's rock, but it's beyond, it's, it looks like it's beyond the right of way almost. Yeah, it looks like there could be a sidewalk connection fully across there. Wait, if the adjacent property owner was to build one, or the city was to build one.
Right, that rock outcrop may, may extend towards the road, you know, that, you know, you, you see it coming up, but, you know.
The other, the other thought that gives me pause to just ignore the need for a sidewalk here is because the sidewalk across the street is so inadequate that, again, if you live right next door or anybody else beyond that property in the community, having to navigate that sidewalk and get to the well now is difficult. And so it's not only there's, there's an inadequate sidewalk on the other side, but it's also just thinking about how community members are supposed to get to this development. And I'm, I'm happy to see this development happen in this location. I think it's a great thing. But it concerns me that, especially when you're attached to this big lot, that it's, it's something that is meant to be driven to from Cahose or Clifton Park or somewhere else, and it's not something that's necessarily for the folks right there in the community. And it should be both, right? I, you know, there's nothing wrong with people coming in from other places, but I want to see that natural connection that's easy to walk to. So if it is a payment in lieu of.
Well, I don't see any, there's no engineering reason. I see what you could not install sidewalk along there. The rock outcropping is on 126th is not like it is on
Right.
25th where it butts the curb essentially.
Yeah.
The issue here would be their property extends halfway to Third Avenue.
Right.
So there would be, you know, this would, there wouldn't be a connection as a result of this project. We would then need to, you know, the city would need to contact the next landowner and coordinate with them on the installation to actually make a connection to, to Third Ave, which doesn't have sidewalks on.
Right, and if there was, if there was a, a payment and the city was then able to improve a nearby sidewalk to make walking, you know, in this area safer and easier.
So that's something we could do. What we could do is in, in taking their payment, we could improve the sidewalk on the other side of 126th. There is sidewalk today, and the city could take that on as part of our paving program.
If you think that that's feasible, then I.
Yes, I think that is.
So as long as the, the curb, sorry, the, the corner right there, the curb ramp is improved and there's a, a payment in lieu of installing sidewalk, that's fine.
Yeah, the, the corner, the corner ramp, the rest of the sidewalk that's being proposed, it will be all ADA compliant.
And that's going, going both north, south, and east west. I see, I see the, the north, south connection here. You know, you're showing it, the ramp going south across the street, but I'm just.
Yeah, this, this side, I believe the, the ramp is already both, you know.
I'm just talking about from, from your property going across the Second Ave. There's no ramp shown in that direction, and I want to make sure that there's one in that direction as well.
Now, the, the current crossing for Second Ave is over further where the screen is, the mini screen. Because that's where you went or Hannaford.
Looking at Google Maps right now, I mean, there's a.
Yeah, you're talking about the ramp, the, the crossing of 126th Street parallel to Second Avenue. There's no, neither of those ramps are compliant currently.
But there are ramps.
They, they're, yes.
And I want to make sure, and while we're installing a new.
If he's doing a new sidewalk. Certainly the corner that they're touching
Yes.
would be made compliant, so it would have detective warning strips installed. I think that's really the only thing lacking in terms of compliance. They may want to replace panels, fine.
My, my comments about, you know, you can see it here going south, right?
Yes, right.
I just want to make sure it's also going to go west.
Up the page, across Second.
Yeah, so across Second, the, the crossing is over by where you cross to enter Hannaford.
There's a, there's a crossing right.
Yeah.
Right here though too as well. I mean, they could see the, the crosswalk. The lines are faded, just like they are a lot of places in our.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that.
So, yeah, just making sure all directions are covered, and that's, those are my comments.
I, I didn't see it over here. At the Hannaford.
I'm confident in your ability to design this, so I, I'm comfortable with stipulating that. It doesn't need to, doesn't need to make, you know, that's not a reason that you have to come back, but it needs to be done.
Yeah. A dollar amount we're going to use for the payment in lieu of sidewalk.
I'm sorry, what's that? The dollar amount.
I'd have to determine it. Do you want it, you want an estimate right now?
Well, we, we were going to propose $10,000.
That's, that's adequate. Yep, I mean, we'll, we'll formalize that in some way, but I think that's the ballpark of what we're talking about, certainly.
Okay, any other commissioner comments? Bill, anything? Anthony?
No, I have never anything else. I, I agree with James's suggestions. I think this is a happy compromise as far as increasing pedestrian access to the space.
Are we all good on lighting and signage around the facility? Everybody comfortable with that? Okay. All right.
We do have a comment from Barb. If you, I don't know if she can unmute.
She on.
She's joining us via Zoom.
Hi. Am I on?
Yep.
Hi, Barb Nelson here, 37 Bell Avenue, and I'd just like to weigh in on the sidewalk discussion as a member of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee for the City of Troy and a member of Transport Troy. I fully support this discussion about the sidewalks, and I think, you know, in this particular case, I guess, a, a payment in lieu, as long as it's spent, you know, in that general vicinity of the area is, is totally, you know, acceptable. If it's acceptable to the city, it's acceptable to me, but I really appreciate the attention paid to walkability. And, yeah, somebody's always got to be first. Sometimes there's no, you know, the sidewalk ends. But it is the owner's responsibility to have installed it and to even have a sign saying, you know, sidewalk ends ahead so that that no one proceeds there if they, if they need to go further, but in this case, the, the payment in lieu, I think, is a good solution, and to standardize that as an option, I think would be a, a good step for the city in, you know, instead of just saying, oh, well, we can't do it. But actually putting that investment toward making the other side of the street more accessible. I, I think it's a great, great idea. Thank you.
Thanks, bud. Do we have any other members of the public? If you could raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. And Eric.
We got one person in person as well.
And then, yeah, if you're here in person to speak, just come up to the front row and we'll work through everybody. All the comments. If you could actually state your name and address for the record.
I'm Eric Wisher, 30 Fairfield Road. I'm the president of Troy Uniform Fire Fighters Association. I think there's a significant, significant safety issue here. The gentleman said that there's a transfer rate of 1.6%. I'm just going to guess and say they see 30 people a day. That's 10,000 people a year. That's 160 calls for the fire department, for the ambulance in Lansenberg. The ambulance in Lansenberg does over 3,000 calls a year. When that ambulance is out, an hour, two hours at a time, for ball, that takes a ladder truck off. It'll be a million and a half dollar piece of equipment. When we have a structured fire and we don't have a ladder truck to respond, we can't get to a roof, we can't rescue people from high places. I think this is a significant, significant issue. I'm not against the project, but we have to, we can't keep improving projects and not adjust the manpower for the department. Four years ago, the deputy mayor said they were going to come up with a formula for projects to address how many calls a potential project would create. I think based on the number he said, in my average of 30 people a day, four people an hour, is probably accurate. I think based on the number he said, in my average of thirty people a day, four people an hour is probably accurate. That's a hundred and sixty calls a year. That's five percent increase for that ambulance. We have an ambulance downtown that does forty-four hundred calls a year. Mohawk and Empire nonexist in the city. We do all the nursing home transports now, the sit-to-living transports. They used to do them. They don't do them. They don't have the staff. Uh, RPI is a club. It's hit or miss. We respond to RPI on every call because we don't know if RPI ambulance is coming. So I'm not against a project, but we have to address the issue. We can't keep approving projects and not address the manpower problem that it creates. That's all I'd like to say. It's a safety issue for the members of the, that we represent in the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I could comment on that. I think it is.
Just make sure.
Usually I'm loud enough. Um, the, uh, the, um, I think the planning commission's involvement in, in that request would be a written recommendation to the city council. For funding for a, uh, an environmental impact, uh, statement, a general. General is a G I S? Generic, thank you. Generic environmental impact statement. That type of mechanism is how other municipalities assess mitigation fees. One of the most successful municipalities in the area that has such a program is the town of Colony. They have mitigation fees for traffic. They have them for water sewer. They might have other special areas for, for various things. So that would be the mechanism that would allow the city to collect fees for those purposes. So that study would go in depth um, into existing infrastructure, existing demand, um, service calls, all of that data would be analyzed. And, uh, the result would be a numerical impact fee that can be assessed based on either the square footage of the, of the structure, the use of the structure, um, some way to uniformly assess that fee. So that it's not sort of a, you know, a one-off, um, type approach, which usually doesn't stand up in court of law. So.
Just want to make sure I understand the options here. If we're writing a letter recommending, are we, are you proposing we write a letter recommending that that study be done?
Yeah.
Or carrying that as a direct issue for?
No, 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 you couldn't, you cannot address it here today. Long term is how you would address that issue. Um, I've suggested a similar approach for parking. Especially with the new, well, existing zoning code, new zoning code, not having, um, parking requirements, but, um, definitely a concern from residents that parking be addressed. Um, a mitigation fee would be one of those, those ways to handle it. So an applicant would come in front of you. They'd have a study that says they need thirty parking spaces. There would be a payment in lieu. Essentially, right? If we don't build those thirty spaces, we would pay the city X amount of dollars or if they, you know, smaller business has a parking demand and they don't have the ability to build any parking, they would also have, you know, a fee assessed as, as opposed to, um, you know, having to do something they can't do or just getting a variance and not addressing the issue at all.
I guess my question is, wouldn't the applicant need to have that study done?
It wouldn't. No, this is something longer term. This is a bigger picture. This is the, the planning commission would be asking the city council to provide funding to do this citywide or for a specific area of the city.
This is in response to Mr. Wisher's comment.
Correct. This is how, right. You cannot address it here tonight in this one particular instance. But if the planning commission is looking to be more involved in something like that, that's how it would be addressed at the council level. Appropriating funding for the study. Um, and then the commission, of course, would be heavily involved in that process.
Great.
Can I just add to that?
Of course.
Like you guys are the planning commission, right? You specify parking spaces, safety at a sidewalk. Uh, how many dumpsters for the size of the building? How many trees? How many bushes? How many? That's a part of the planning process. We're not addressing the planning of the fire department and the amount of calls we're doing. Right? We started the ambulance twenty-five years ago with fifty-nine hundred calls. We're doing fourteen thousand calls. We have the same twenty-four guys. Right? We should have twice as many people. We don't. Right? So everybody's thinking everything's getting taxed out, but in the planning process, there needs to be something to address the amount of calls, right? The, the cruise ships come to town for the month you're coming up, right? We did four calls on a cruise ship last year. Not a big deal. It's only four, but you keep adding four, four, ten, hundred and sixty. Right? And we're not addressing the issue of the, the manning to compensate for those calls when we take fire trucks off duty.
So is this mechanism that Aaron's mentioned, is this something that you support?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think in your process, there needs to be, you know, if you improve a hundred unit building, how many calls are those hundred moves going to generate through the course of a year, right? They're going to generate calls. There's no doubt in my mind. And, you know, different types of housing generate more calls than other types of housing.
Right. I, I, we understand the need and, and appreciate the comments. I, I wish there was something we could do right now to, to help mitigate.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we had council people in the past on projects saying, public comments that the firehouse in Lansenberg is already overpacked with the amount of calls it does. And, uh, you know, we're at the breaking point. So I'm just trying to get something addressed here. Like I said, I'm not against the project. We just have to address the issue of, that the bearing it has on the fire department.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Another, another way to bring that in front of us is also through, through the environmental assessment that the applicant does, just having it as another factor for the environmental assessment.
Well, I would certainly, uh, support writing that letter to the council as well. I think that, that sounds like a great idea. You know, again, it's, it's, I feel like it's a bit funny because we're meant to be talking about this project and we're all kind of on a tangent. So I think we should address the project. If we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was going to ask Aaron just specifically to this project. So as I understand it, unless the code were to change in some way, we, we don't have the authority to ask that kind of a fee here today.
Certainly not. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Any other members of the public here in, in person? Anyone else on Zoom? Any hands up there? Okay. Um, if there's no other commissioner comments, um, this is, this is type one, if I recall.
Uh, this would be an unlisted action.
Oh, okay. I think our staff added us type one, staff report. All right. So unlisted, we don't need to declare. All right. So then at this point, we're looking for site plan approval. Does anyone want to frame some language for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with the following stipulations. One, that the, uh, ramp is added to the site plan and constructed.
Before we do that, we do have to, I'm sorry, we do have to do a secret approval. It's un, it's unlisted. So that just means no, you, you're correct. You do not need to declare lead agency. But this board, um, commission needs to take action this evening on secret before it can go any further for a negative. Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So let's start there. Um, I'll take a motion for a negative, uh, declaration on the secret finding.
I'll move.
A second.
Okay, moving to a vote. Bill?
Oh, I'm in favor.
Yes.
James, Suzanne. Anthony.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Okay. Pass this case. And then back to you, James, for.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve of the following stipulations. One, that the, uh, curb, or curb ramp is, is constructed in both directions going across second Ave and one twenty-sixth. And second, that the, uh, applicant makes a, a payment in lieu, instructing the sidewalk with $10,000. Uh, I'd like both of those, um, stipulations to be reviewed by the engineer's office or engineering office, um, before the project moves forward with the building department.
Yeah, with that final caveat, I would, I would second that the amount should be coordinated through the engineering.
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to, uh, this evening, say it would not exceed 10,000.
Okay.
If, I imagine the applicant wants to know a ceiling on that. So I'm prepared to make that 10,000, not to exceed $10,000.
Okay. All right. So I've seconded the motion. So we'll move to a vote. Phil?
I'll vote yes, James.
Yes.
Suzanne. Anthony?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Passes?
Thank you.
All set.
And, uh, thank you.
Congratulations on the chairman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Still working through it. Okay. Sure I'm on the right one. Um, another. Eighty-one. T L P C twenty twenty-two eighty-one, still on. Okay. Next item is another item for old business is P R P C twenty twenty-two zero zero eight one eight eight five fifth avenue. Uh, do we have the applicant yet? Awesome.
Hello. Lisa Rodriguez with Tap Incorporated. And we prepared the site plan for Barra. And so I'll just introduce a project and let Barra talk to you about it. It's a former gas station with some additional, uh, sales in the building. But, and, um, he wants to continue that. The gas station, the filling station feature and discontinue the repair shop and add some sales and he can talk more about that. The city is, I believe, in the process of, I would call decommissioning Northern Drive. And so that may affect the site plan in the future. They're talking with the neighbors, uh, Mr. Ahamieri and, uh, the. And yes, and the Pettit family from the Old Bailey, uh, the neighboring, uh, property owner about how they might split up that street. So we haven't proposed any improvements on that side because, um, we don't think it's going to be there in the future and it actually might affect how we lay out the site, but if that happens, we'll come back and show you or the staff how, um, how we would do it differently if he gets a piece of that property. There is some existing sidewalk. Uh, we didn't, uh, increase the sidewalk because this is an unusual property that has an enormous burden if you start, uh, providing sidewalks on all sides. So if you need, if you would like to see more sidewalk added, we're open to that discussion. And I'm going to let, um, Barra tell you more about the project.
Please.
Hello again, everyone. Uh, my name is Barra from Casablanca. We're a business that has been operating since nineteen seventy-two. We partnered up with gender and last year, and we have decided to discontinue the repair shop since there's many, many repair shops on Fifth Avenue. And we decided to upgrade the, uh, building. Have a drive-through for people to grab their smoothies, coffee. It's going to be like a drive-through gas station. People can grab their coffee, smoothie. Healthy, you know, food like that, side balls and stuff like that, fruit balls, salad balls. And, uh, that's all we're doing. We're not changing anything in the shape of the building. Uh, we're just repairing it. We're, uh, upgrading the pumps, putting new pumps. And, uh, that's it. Repairing and that's, that's literally all we're doing.
Am I remembering correctly that previously there was a drive-through lane proposed?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just still there.
Yeah, it's just, it's just changed. The way out of it.
We, we are, we oriented to come out on New Turnpike now instead of Northern Drive. Because Northern Drive may not be there, um, in the near future. So it made more sense. We also took a curb cut away since our last meeting. There were two curb cuts out onto one hundred and twenty-fifth street. We made it one curb cut. That was based on your feedback. Hmm. Yeah, then, uh, he wants, there's a lot of paving there and, uh, part of the property just sort of has merged into the right of way and he had planned to establish lawn there. You'll probably ultimately be planting, but we don't know what would happen until we have a sense of what's happening with Northern Drive.
As I have, uh, spoken to the city before that, if we do get Northern Drive, uh, we promised the city that we will, you know, book grass throughout the whole property of ours at the back, throw some, you know, children toys for them, like slides and stuff like that. And, you know, we'll pay for them. We'll make it, you know, we'll put some seats, chairs for people.
You're saying in that hatched portion along Northern?
Yes, cor- correct.
Okay. Can you s- Can you go up, uh, scroll up to the previous page? I can get us in the document. Is, this is your proposed? That was last time?
This was last.
This is the proposed plan. This shows the, um, the comments that we had at the previous meeting. There were two curb cuts onto one hundred and twenty-fifth street. There is a stoplight there. Um, I had a little bit of a concern about having two curb cuts there with, um, queuing traffic. So they've, they've relocated one of those curb cuts to New Turnpike Road. Which provides a little bit more, um, flow through the site for the, for the gas pumps. Um, and then there's a one-way out for the drive-through window. You know, what, what they do with Northern Drive, if the city is able to surplus that land. Really kind of outside the discussions this evening. Um, appreciate the applicant's willingness to, um, maybe repurpose some of it for, for a, a small park or something like that, but that's, that's too far in the future really to be considered this evening.
Yeah.
Um, what I did, uh, want to just coordinate with, um, the owner is, is we wanted to do curb ramps at this intersection. Specifically in this area here. Which is really, it's really lacking. There's, um, a couple of older ramps, not, they're not really compliant. Crosswalks are faded, nonexistent. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that we coordinate that work with, with the applicant so that we do that at the same time. But this plan is, is sufficient for that, for that purpose.
Yeah, it doesn't currently show, uh, like an ADA ramp right there.
Right. And we would actually need to put, um, not just this intersection here, but we would need to add in an ADA ramp here.
Yep.
That makes the connection across one hundred and twenty-fifth. And the city would have to coordinate that work because we would need it on both sides. Outside this, the scope of the applicant's work.
Is there a condition you'd look for us to carry?
Um, the only condition is that they coordinate the installation of sidewalks with the, with the city. That's all.
Okay. All right. Any, uh, commissioner comments?
For questions? Uh, I'll say first, I, I mean, I think the improvements that you've made since last month are great. Yeah, I'm struggling with the same, same sort of thing than I was with the last case and that there's not a sidewalk on one twenty-fifth. Uh, I understand there's curb cut there, um, for egress, egress. I think a sidewalk there would be appropriate. And the same thing with the, the curb ramps that Aaron had mentioned. You know, that's, those are, those are minimal.
Yeah, so, um, we're agreeable to that, to add the sidewalk on one hundred and twenty-fifth street, make the curb ramps, um, compliant for accessibility.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we, again, the city would do the curb ramps. We'd coordinate that because we have to with the other sites. Um, but we would just again, want to coordinate with them to make sure that we're, we're providing them, um, elevations and locations that they, they're able to connect to.
Yeah.
And certainly coordinate with the installation of that driveway curb.
Do you have a sidewalk width in mind?
Uh, by feet. Five foot minimum, yeah.
Okay.
Are there any proposed changes to the stormwater drainage or anything on site? It's reducing the impervious area, if I'm not mistaken, anyways.
Yeah, this doesn't, um, this is currently not operating as a, as a filling station, right?
We're operating like literally like maybe two days a week, three days a week.
Few hours, that's all.
Um, you may need trench drains at your curb cuts because if you had a spill, um, that would have to be contained on your site, not into the city system.
So the trench drain would go into holding tank? Is that?
That we would coordinate, we would have to coordinate that offline. It's a more involved discussion. Which is part of, that's part of, uh, that would probably be part of your, um, petroleum bulk storage permit that you'd get from D E C. They probably want to see, you know, get, filling stations are considered, uh, hotspots for contamination, stormwater contamination. It wouldn't, it would be able to tie into the city system, but basically would trap, uh, petroleum products onsite to be cleaned out.
Okay. So when he gets permits to work on the tanks and the filling devices, that would get addressed?
Yeah, it would have to be addressed at, at that time. I don't see that, the sewer's not shown on this map, but I believe you do show the manholes. So on one hundred and twenty-fifth, so we would need to coordinate with the, uh, Department of Public Utilities for that connection and then, um, you need to comply whatever, whatever D E C has for regulations on that.
So the company that will be installing the tanks, uh, their name, uh, is American Petroleum that they're known for that. They will come with their own plans. They will take up a permit.
Yeah, I wouldn't rely, I wouldn't rely on a contractor to make sure you're compliant, but we can, we can have that conversation offline.
Sure. Absolutely.
And wouldn't that be something we need to see in the site plan though?
I don't think so. I think the addition of that, so as far as the planning commission is concerned, it's, it's more of a minor utility. You know, the, how the drains connect is underground, affect the aesthetic of the site or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Okay. The only other comment I had was on, in that lawn area, I think doing some plantings would be appropriate now, you know, throwing a, a couple of shade trees in there, larger shade trees would be nice. You know, just say, say three, plant three larger shade trees. They could be small now. They don't have to be large trees now, but something that will grow.
We definitely do so.
Okay. Please, is that something that could be added to the site plan and, and stipulated? And then reviewed by staff?
We, yeah, we, yeah, we're hoping to get approval today and, uh, we would agree to that stipulation and we submit to the staff.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, any other commissioner comments? All right, has anyone from the public came in person to speak on this item? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Moket Fais. I'm from the eight eighty-four Second Avenue in Central Gas Station. I'm the system manager over there. I'll just owner of that business and the gentleman over here, his name is Sonny. He's the owner of Sunny Convenience Store across the street. Didn't knew about this whole process that was going on over here till like two days ago. I found out about it that guys are new business coming into production. Just have several, a couple of questions regarding about the business that's already existence over there with us, plus the way the traffic and intersection that is so busy. And congested as is, as you can see, there's plenty of limitations over here. That is something that we're concerned about. And that's basically what they were over here for, and I'm speaking on their behalf because it's a little bit nervous on myself. I'm a little bit also. For some speaking in front of.
No need, no need to be.
So we just have a concern like, you know, the traffic over here, that's definitely gonna be issue because as you know, there's already a lot of concerns about the traffic by the way. The lump comes up and goes down and the business being closed over there, not enough traffic, there's still enough, a lot of, you know, accidents and some incidents happen over there also. And getting the right amount of coverage, opening up another business within less than a minority of three existing businesses plus two food businesses over there also. We've created a lot of congestion, a lot of headache for the tri police and the ambulance and everybody else to show up. Because right now, if anytime we have some concern, it takes us forty-five minutes over an hour for somebody to show up over there to our gas station for any. Adults of like hitting somebody or some domestic violence like that kind of stuff. I don't know if this is the right player phone today to object about it. But that's something that came to my attention when I, when I was told on Sunday that is a hearing going on for this one. So that is one thing we are just concerned about as a business owners because we've been over in business for over like eleven, twelve years right now. And the gentleman over here has been in business for almost four years and having not that concerned with the competition too much, it's just more of the traffic flow over there. Because if you make the screen a little bit smaller. The gentleman Sonny owns a store right in the triangular corner on the other side. Page number five, if you go up.
Excellent, excellently closed.
That's the, so this is the business that, you know, is the gentleman that owns over here. You can see that all the condition over here, it is like three forty streets coming in one intersection. That makes a lot of liability. Yes, I want him to do business also, but at the same time, it's a thing of the traffic flow over here. Without damage traffic flow, there's already accidents over here more often. There's a lot of hazards over here. With him being in business full time, that's gonna create more chaos for the tri police. Right now for less, but we only have one tri cop coming over there patrolling the place. If something happens, it takes me at least forty-five minutes or over hours just to show up to my gas station. Hey, listen, I incident, somebody breaking into the store in Brockoff, I'm not getting proper coverage. If you have more traffic coming in, how does one person accommodate four businesses or five businesses right now? Whereas three is already a trouble.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So you're saying that more businesses means more crime?
More business means more traffic and more incidents will happen. Because again, like the earlier people that were talking about the project being opened up. Puts more pressure on the workforce of the cops, buses and everything else. They are already struggling as it right now. That's not only them, everybody else on the industry is struggling with that. So adding more infrastructure to the local existing community, that just makes it a little more harder to cook itself. And people will get more confidence of doing things and just walking away because guess what? Right now, as of, like I said. We had incident, somebody hit the car and drove off. You're gonna sell the tri police show up over there for at least, what, two hours, something? And on top of that, even when somebody came up, that was like about next day, some deck showed up to take the video and everything else like that. So that is something to be concerned about, opening up new and new businesses over here. We have to evolve with the law enforcement and the locals because again, they are the one taking more burden from, you know. For providing safety and security and then them not able to provide security, how are businesses right now checking with some of the. Upper area of it is a little more, you know, troubled and everything else coming on my direction, how are they gonna give us the protection over there? So this is a little bit concerned over there also. So like it's a multiple factors that are coming into this whole fact that we showed up today.
Okay, hopefully I can help a little bit understanding process and authority wise. So one thing to the traffic concern, the previous iteration of the design proposed more entrances. And for your exact concern about congestion in the area, we we asked that they remove some of the in and out. The inlets and outlets to the to the lot in an effort to address that. And then on on the notion of there being other businesses already in the area, really, this is a permitted use. So as the planning commission, we're only able or authorized or have the authority to review proposals against what the permitted uses are. And to try and better the site plan, to better serve the community. We can't evaluate something based on another set of businesses doing a similar type of thing, being immediately adjacent.
Yeah, we, we own, I own the gas station, sorry, I was excited about the gas station, they can use. We have five convenience store, two Stuart and three other one already in that area. And that less than one kilometer, one mile radius. And that's the area is a very low income area. That's a pretty look of the zip code. People doesn't have money. If they come, they buy one dollar item, we make ten cent, fifteen cent. And the proposal show they are, they are going to change car repair shop to convenience store. Our concern is that the five businesses already we are doing the taxes, we are paying all the fees for town, city and street and the federal. And it's very hard to survive, all our employees after the COVID. My concern is that if you're going to allow a small business and there is gonna be too much that area, it's going to hurt the existing business. That's the question to you guys, yes, who look up for that? If you guys change, going to change the repair shop, it wasn't there in the convenience store. No sales store was there, only the gas station and the car repair shop. And I'm not saying he lied, but he said he's operating two days a week. I didn't see anybody there, yeah, anybody opening that place or working that place. Nobody see either me or my employees or my neighbor, nobody sees there anyone operation there, doing there. That's completely close more than a year.
I just, I just want to reiterate what Roddy had said earlier in that we, you know, we're we're basing. Our decision off the merits of the project that's being presented to us and not based off of any other businesses or any other properties in the area. You know, doing so would be just, we're just not able to do so.
But in the proposals, in the proposal, it said it's going to be a change to the convenience sale. Or discontinuing the the car repair shop. It's going to be, there's a proposal over here, get approval there.
Right.
And we are just going to be inform the board or all of you guys. Because there's already five businesses in the mission, you know.
I'll take a stab at this. It doesn't matter if there were fifty stores.
It didn't matter.
Block. It is not something that this board can consider in their decision.
It's just not one of the contributing factors.
Not allowed. It's illegal.
We we appreciate your comments and we appreciate your coming to share your concerns, but unfortunately, the zoning code tells us what is allowed to be. What sort of businesses are allowed to occur at a certain site? We're here to review the site plan and to make sure that it complies with the city code and to take into account traffic concerns and those types of things about the land use. But we can't make a decision about whether or not a convenience store goes there versus, you know, whatever, a daycare or a flower shop. We can't decide if the applicant wants to do that and it's permitted by the zoning code, we can't tell them no. All we can do is make sure that their proposal.
Excuse me, the block over here is mentioned over here.
We understand, yeah, they're they're being open and straightforward about what they intend to do. The question isn't whether or not we are aware of the type of business. It's just procedurally, we're trying to explain that what we're permitted, the factors that we consider do not include surrounding businesses. And there being existing businesses next door that potentially do the same thing. So it's just not one of the characteristics or qualities of the proposal that we're permitted to consider.
Yeah, it's why you see, it's why you see CBS on the kitty corner to every Walgreens in America is because. Planning boards don't have the authority to restrict what types of businesses go in. That's part of the zoning code. And and even then, the zoning code allows certain uses. It doesn't allow a quantity of certain uses.
But excuse me, CBS, I'm going to just share that they sell the medicine, they make one prescription, hundred of dollar. The convenience store, it sells some, one customer, one customer come, we buy one per product. We make twenty cent, ten cent. We can't compare with the CBS in the world group.
It's just an example. It's just. If you were to come in for your business, if you wanted to open a business, we couldn't say, no, you can't open this because somebody across the street has the same thing. So we understand your concern. Thank you for coming and airing this concern, but it's not something that we can consider. If you, if any of you have comments on the site plan about characteristics of the site plan, we'd be happy to hear those concerns as well.
For instance, the comment on congestion and access to the site is is a consideration we can think for or discuss.
The question is that about the zoning, who should we, you know, they wanna move farther, like who should they talk to about when it comes to zoning?
It's actually timely that you should ask. So Troy, Troy is going through its recode initiative for the zone. That hasn't been ratified yet.
In front of the city council, so you could contact her. I think Steve should, Steve should comment on it.
Steven?
Oh.
So the. Steve's dragging me. Commissioner of Planning. So the first thing I would say on, we can regulate uses, in particular convenience stores, but not in this case. Because this is a gas station, convenience stores is a separate definition. If the city council authorizes us to regulate businesses in zoning code, we can do it. And it's usually by stating adverse impact on neighboring properties. And it's usually, you can't have one, one type of the same business within a certain distance of another. So I just want to clear that up and this specifically doesn't apply to this case here. Okay. But the zoning ordinance, I'm waiting to bring it for a vote before the city council or council is doing some final cleanup on that to bring it before the city council. The public hearings have already been held, but when the city council votes on it, you can still go before them, which will probably be at the finance meeting in October. And at the city council meeting in November, if you have suggestions, you can look at the city code right now. It's at Recode Troy NY. And Andy looked like I was saying something I shouldn't have said there with businesses. Did I say that wrong?
No, but it's separation.
Separation distance, yeah, right.
You can't set a maximum number in a zone, but in certain circumstances, you can make certain finding facts and regulate that by separation distances. However, in this instance, the current version of the code does not allow that type of regulation in this particular building.
Is it specific in current code specific to, as Steve just said. Convenience stores versus as this proposed a fuel station?
Yeah, a gas station with retail sales does not constitute a convenience store as it's written in the zoning ordinance. They're separately defined. And the state does this with marijuana sales.
The separation requirements are only allowed to be levied in the convenience store classification.
Under existing zoning book.
Okay, in theory, the code could include that for any type of store where it says certain.
As long as there's an underlying finding of facts for a reasonable basis for requiring a separation, yes, it could be any business.
And what's the distance requiring?
I think it's two hundred feet for convenience stores.
I think it's five hundred feet. It's five hundred feet, but again, it's not in this case. And and any stores that were there before that code was adopted ten years ago, our grandfather did.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I think the applicant wanted to speak a little bit. Did, did you have something you wanted to add?
See if we have other comments from the public.
I didn't know if you wanted to address that first.
Okay. We've been existing for forty-two years. The same day, four years, seven years, six years since nineteen seventy-eight. So we've been existing for forty-two years as well. It exists only four years and twelve years. The other thing that I wanted to add is that their places compared to ours, ours, we can have a lot of light outside. So the place is gonna look less, the whole neighborhood is gonna change when you have lady lights throughout the whole night, less crime. You know, the rest. I mean, there isn't really anything else for me to add. You guys have said it all. But I don't think they understand exactly what this whole project is just about updating the site, not changing user or anything like that. Besides removing the repair shop. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anyone else from the public, if you come up? And just state your name and and address for us, please.
My name is Courtney. Honestly, I live a few blocks away from there. I prefer not to say my address for certain reasons. But first, I wanted to say that I think bringing that there is. I don't think it's gonna bring any crime or unwanted attention. The more people you bring. That honestly, that'll end up scaring off people. I I've noticed that. Second, I mean, I can see they're clearly worried about losing business, but you possibly be losing business because. I've personally been sexually harassed by one of them. So. I, I.
It's, this isn't a back and forth, just you can address us. Thank you.
But I think it would be really good to bring. More this gas station or this into the area.
Okay.
I really do because it's not, a lot of these stores aren't good. It's not good.
I appreciate the comments. Thank you. Okay, any other members of public? Anyone on Zoom? No, okay. Can I share, is anything else? All right, just looking for, this is an unlisted action. All right, so I will. If we have no other questions, I'll, I'll take a motion for either negative or positive duck.
I'll move to make a negative declaration.
One second.
Okay, moving to a vote. Bill?
James?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes. Okay, so you got that, Eric? Eric, you good? Okay. And then moving on, the next action would be to move for site plan approval. Did you wanna again list out your conditions?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve of the following stipulations. One, that a sidewalk is constructed on one twenty-fifth Street along the entire front of the property. Minimum of, minimum width of five feet. Two, that curb ramps are installed, ADA compliant curb ramps are installed. On both the corners of New Turnpike and one twenty-fifth and one twenty-fifth and fifth. In coordination with the engine, city of Troy's engineering office. And number three would just be that at least three deciduous trees are planted in the lawn area. You know, they can be as as small as four or five feet at the time of planting, but just trees, trees that will grow. And just ensuring that their growth is is actually happening, you know, let's say a year following the installation of them. I'd like for all three of those changes to be shown on the site plan and I'd like the site plan to be reviewed by city staff before going and receiving a building permit for these changes.
Okay, thank you. Taking second.
My second.
Suzanne's second. All right, moving to a vote. Bill? James?
Oh, yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes.
Uh, just really quickly, you guys are all set. On the, on the topic of, we, we, we decided to look up a vote. So, so section two eighty-five sixty-seven J says that notwithstanding any other provision of this code, to the contrary. No convenience store, variety store or retail use, not specifically defined within two eighty-five twelve, may open within five hundred feet of a retail store of the same use. Unless the use is incidental to a gasoline filling station. For the purposes of the measurement, it's from the center of the front doors.
So how do you interpret that?
Well, they sell gas, doesn't apply.
That's a lot more broad than I thought it was.
It is incredibly broad we were just discussing.
Retail sales, so.
Not specifically defined within two eighty-five twelve. So again, our definition section. Describes certain retail uses, but if you are an undefined retail use. Then you're not, you know, able to be open within five hundred feet of, and that's the current code, not the the new one.
And i- in response to Mr. Raff's comment earlier that the code is. And i- in response to Mr. Raff's comment earlier that the code is deemed presumptively valid and well written.
Okay. Thank you. Touched a nerve there, I think. All right, moving on, next item.
Only my second.
PLPC 2022 0083, King's Landing 2. Welcome back.
Hi.
Welcome.
So you're not gonna give us the, the whole thing again, right?
No, no, we're gonna, we have the whole, we have the whole thing, but what we're gonna do is we're going to, uh.
Let's hear what's changed.
We're gonna abridge it, abridge it.
Yeah, the view shed is great, but we don't do the view shed presentation.
Yeah.
If you're with us on Zoom, just bear with us, we're getting it, the presentation loaded in to share. Some things can't wait.
Yeah, I believe I did. It might be under Apple.
Are you gonna share a screen on the other ones?
Yeah, okay.
How many public are on Zoom? Do we have?
Okay.
Four of what? Four of those places. Oh, are.
Almost there.
I think we're good.
And those cover, those cover. Eric's new, back in 1978 or whatever, it was never considered. So it said undefined? Yeah, so if you go in the zone, you read all the definitions, any of those things that count, which it does, does define a lot of stuff. But I'm still confused, if it's undefined, can be within 500? No, no.
Sorry about that.
It's like a pop job. This is not, not defined in 19, whatever it is, like they say, they worry with bringing that into the zoning code. So two of them popped up.
All right.
I would almost think it'd be the defined ones. Oh.
What do you want to do? Can, can people on Zoom also see the presentation? Yep, got the thumbs up, good.
Okay, good evening.
We have a lot of visitors here.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cosmo Marfey from the BDC Group. Here with me tonight, we have Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering, our civil engineer, and George Olson from Olson and Associate, our design architect. And even though we have the full presentation, we're just going to go over really the changes from, from what we discussed last, okay? Obviously, you know, our team, okay? Little project highlight, you know, before essential commercial zoning, 52 residential units, 36 indoor parking spaces, inclusive of the eight from Kings One, 14 outdoor parking spaces, and now we have about 600 square feet of retail restaurant and another 600 square feet, thereabouts of outdoor space that will probably connect to the retail slash flex area. So previous comments and the items that we've included in, in this, in this presentation. So we included the schematics for the, and floor plans and elevations for the existing buildings. We, we, we're gonna coordinate some landscape with the church boundary. We, we, we gotta reach out to them and see exactly if we can do something on their side or something fancy with the screen with the fence. We added outdoor seating at the northeast corner of Federal and Fifth Ave. We activated the rooftop along Federal. We added, there was a comment about adding maybe some balconies or some Juliet balconies on the north elevation. So we've done that. The, you know, Sarah, last, last time brought to our attention that it'd be, be great to have retail, but also some flex area where if the retail doesn't come, it's just not an empty storefront. So what we did is we added, you'll see, we added a, an egress ingress from the building, not only from the outside. We included the bulkheads. I know some, the, the elevations had the bulkheads, but the renderings did it, so we included the, the bulkheads with that. We totally removed the parking lot that we were proposing on city profits, property on Jacob and Fifth. And obviously, we updated all the documentation, EAF and project summary and sewer reports, things of that nature. And so, so now everything that you have received in our submission is reflective of all the changes that we made to the, to the plans and to the, and to the scope of the project. So I'll get Nick up here really briefly to talk about just the site plan, if you like, or if not, I could.
I don't think anything really changed on the site plan.
Yeah, the, the only, the only major change to the site plans was the elimination of the parking lot at the corner of Jacob and Fifth, you know, so that really is the, the made, the, the big difference between the plans that we submitted last time when we were in front of you. If there are any questions, when, when we open it up to questions, we'll, I'll come back up and try to answer the questions, okay? Thank you. Okay, and George, George will go through the renderings and elevations and some, I don't, I don't think anything really changed on the street, street scape analysis and, and then filing the schematic layout of, of, of the existing building and that infill building.
Before you go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was there any conversation with O'Neil Apartments in the last month? Okay.
No.
Something you're still planning to do?
Yes, absolutely.
About using their parking spaces?
Yes, yes.
All right.
First is, okay. As Cosmo said, we, we, I think we addressed all your concerns. One of the concerns was the bulkhead, and like Cosmo said, I'll, I'll show you quickly on the elevations. The only bulkheads that we have on this building are a stair. We're required to have minimum of one stair by code go to the roof, and that's all we have because the other stairs separated all the way at the other end. And we'll, we'll never do, when we activate the roof, we'll never do that large of a space up there that we would need the two stairs. So that stair would really just be sticking up over by the church. And we always keep those stairs, the roof of that'll be eight feet. And we do have an elevator bulkhead, and that's bundled next to the stair. And with the elevators that they have now, the more modern traction elevators, that bulkhead's shorter than the stair. It's only about six feet, five and a half feet. So you no longer have this huge, the cable and the equipment and everything, they're much smaller. So it'll be the size of the elevator shaft, about eight by eight, stick up about six feet. And you can see that, I'll show you that on one of the renderings. I don't know if we had the rendering last time that showed the corner, but this one is showing the corner there with the outdoor cafe and planters or the outdoor seating and the planters adjacent to, would be the retail and the entrance to the, to the project. And this is a view from along Fifth Avenue of the existing buildings and the one infill building. Nothing's changed there, but you can see the stair bulkhead up there, and that's about it. Well, it'll be clad in same gray as the upper story there. And the elevator is actually tucked in next to that. So, and this is a view not from the street, this is actually, your eye level's a little higher, so we didn't want to just say, here it is, you can't see it at all, so we did show, so that it's up there. Uh, this is a view of the west corner. Again, no changes on this. And again, this is from the street level, and you can see the stair bulkhead and the elevator bulkheader. And that's what consists of the bulkhead there. This is along Federal Street where we've activated the roof with a small terrace. The terrace can only be a maximum of 750 square feet. Otherwise, we would need that second stair and a second means of egress. But it's a good sized terrace, and I think it would be a nice vantage point to see the river from that side and look up the hill.
My thoughts as well.
Toward RPI. And there's a little closer vignette of the outdoor seating near the entrance.
Were there any changes on that corner in the sidewalk design or in the, Nick? Sorry, I should have asked Nick when he was up.
That's really was, what we had there, Roddy, was that, or Chairman, I'm sorry. It was the, the outdoor area, the outdoor sitting area.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do a little bit maybe different pattern in the, in the concrete work, maybe a different color. But we're not planning on, on, or maybe even brick, you know, just to distinguish between the sidewalk, delineate the sidewalk from the, from the sitting area.
I'm just reacting, remembering our conversation about the, uh.
Yes.
The curvature of that corner.
No, what we, what we've shown, and, and that has stayed the same, is we've shown some striping to, to better delineate.
The cross.
Yeah, it, until, until that federal street corridor is, is better, you know, designed, I think that trying to do, do anything with Kirby, it, it would be, it, it could end up having to be redone. So the, the striping, I think, is what, what at this moment is, is probably the best thing to do at that, at that location.
Okay. Any, anything else presentation wise?
I'll just run through, and I'll show you what, one of the questions was, what are the existing buildings? How are they gonna lay out? But this is the elevation along Fifth Avenue and that's the extent again of the two bulkheads, the stair and the elevator. Like if I'm going too fast, let me know. And you can see them again over on the right.
It looks like there's, um, there's one architectural change that I'm hoping you can just talk to us about. On the, the first two elevations, there's a, there's a piece, there's some trim above the top windows now. Can you just talk to us about, about that change? Yeah, yeah, that's new, correct?
No, no. No, all that is, is like a little sun louver pops out about three feet. And it's just a louver, that's always been on there. On some of the previous elevations, they were yellow, and I think now, now I think the, when we toned the colors down, you probably didn't see them because they're gray now, so.
Okay, thanks.
No changes to the west elevation. And we have a north elevation that doesn't have the. Oh, okay. What, what we've done here is.
We have enlarged these windows a little bit, and there's Juliet balconies, so that's where you.
That gave us the opportunity there to. And that again was just a section across the street. And the street, that had, nothing's changed there. The shaded area, the existing buildings, and the only thing that we did, I think Sarah had brought up the point about the retail and what Cosmo indicated, that if it's just a retail space, it's open only from the exterior. And if something, if, if it doesn't work, it's just a dead space. And I think what, what we're looking at doing there, what Cosmo is thinking of doing is it could be a small cafe or something that was. Also opens to and functions as part of the building as well, with a key card, you can get in and out, but it could have access from the street and obviously access to the outdoor seating, but accessible from the building itself.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, the two, the infill and the existing building in the middle? The two shorter ones, yeah. What's behind there, is it a little yard or what?
Yeah, what this is showing is that portions of those are where, you know, the old photographs falling down the back. And when we take those old porch, it comes to about that point, like you have the existing.
Mm-hmm.
So what we'll be doing is infilling with more.
Onto that.
So when you're done, all four of them will be the same?
Yeah, and there's, I'll show you a plan, and there's an elevation along the back of that as well. Back there. Like a lounge singer. It's the upper that stayed the same. And these are the existing buildings, and what we tried to do was, without doing an exhaustive inventory of what's inside, we have gotten in there and took some quick measurements, and you can see we're trying to keep the existing stairs.
This configuration is more or less what's there, and.
Two of the buildings are three stories, one of the infill, and then one of the existing. So, and then the other two are two stories. So that's how we end up with the 10 units. The infill building, such as where the garage used to be, is such a skinny little building, will end up where the one bedroom in there, and then the others will all be two bedroom units. And you can see here in the back, these dotted lines kind of, well, there isn't a dotted line there, but. Oh, this is the existing building, so that's where the building ends. And we'll be adding on that just to keep a consistent elevation along the back. And you could see the second and third floor, and then front elevations you've seen, and the rear elevations will be relatively simple. Obviously haven't been totally designed yet, but they'll look out, there's a, there's a strip there of five to seven feet, and then there's the park. And I think someone asked, could we put a roof or something maybe over the parking? And we really can't do that because we do have units on the first floor. So they'd essentially be then just in a parking garage rather than a courtyard out there. And I think that's it. Yeah, might as well. Okay, we don't need to see this.
James just got scared.
James, come on.
I mean, this is just aerials, we, we already know how everything looks. Historic report, traffic didn't really change. You still, you still have, you know, 25 trips, PM trips. You know, it's, it's not, it's not a big, it's not a big impact. Let me go right through the benefits and the conclusion. So obviously, we're committing $17 million plus for the investment in Troy. We can, consistent with the communal land use plan and Detroit's, we, we're trying to exit, enhance, we will be enhancing the city of Troy's existing housing stock with 52 new residential homes downtown. We activating the Federal Street corridor in that section of Federal Street, creation of 50 to 75 construction project, construction related. Uh, in that section of Federal Street, creation of fifty to seventy-five construction project, uh, construction related jobs and six full-time jobs. Um, we predict a, uh, an estimated injection of one and a half, one point one five million dollars of discretionary spending. Uh, within the greater Troy community. Obviously, building fees, uh, building permit fees and the contribution towards the, uh, the revitalization plan on Federal Street. In conclusion, you know, we, we, we feel that, uh, we've conformed with all the zoning regulations we've addressed. All the previous neighbors comments, addressed all the previous commission comments. And therefore request, uh, that you, you know, talk about secret and, 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 uh. Providing a positive road for resolution, uh, on a negative declaration and, and a site plan approved. So. And we're here to, obviously, to answer any questions.
Thank you. James, looks like you got one queued up.
Sorry, uh, you said, going back to the, uh, impacts or the improvements, uh, benefits area. Well, the last one, contribution towards the new Federal Street revitalization plan, can you speak to that a little bit more?
Sure. I mean, the, the idea with the, the, the new Federal Street revitalization plan is to activate that street right now, the street. Get some retail on that block. So I think by us providing an opportunity of space for that. I think that, that does exactly what we were trying, I think that's plan's trying to do. We also. With, with the, in, with installing some larger sidewalks in some areas where people could, uh, congregate. I think that will.
You're saying the project in general.
The project in general, right, which we're providing opportunities. Yeah.
Okay, exact. But not, not any other tangible contribution. Okay, that's fine. Just, just wanted to clarify.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, a couple of comments that I have, if you guys don't mind. The, if you wouldn't mind going in the presentation to, uh, there's an elevation rendering on page fifty of one forty-two. Or in my packet, it's a hundred and forty-two pages. So.
Which one?
The, it would be the view looking towards the northeast from the southwest corner. So the view that shows King's One.
And that one, that one.
Yep. So my main comment is an ask of whether or not, um. We, we could change that material for the siding to masonry, uh, masonry.
I. I would have to say that, uh.
I'll, I'll explain my, my thinking.
It's, it's, it's where we, we've added so much more masonry, Mr. Chairman, that this project is becoming. At the borderline where it's not, it's not, it's not even affordable to. It's, it's. It's gonna be impossible to build all masonry with, and trying to do it with, we're keeping some of the costs down and, and we're in the alley. I mean, it's, it's, you're really not gonna see much of it. And what we did, we did actually turn the masonry. A- around and wrapped it around. I think George did a good job with that. I'm not sure if I. Would like to contemplate that.
My, my thinking here is that that view is, is visible from federal. Um, and as you're entering from, uh, the drawbridge there, that's one of the main corridors into the city. So. I think as people come in, they are going to be able to see that. And also, especially in this rendering, it's just very busy. There's, you know, King's Landings, Color Scene, King's, King's One, I should say. Um, and then with this, it's just very busy. Um, that's my own subjective.
Okay.
Look at it.
I mean, I, maybe what we could do, George, is take two more lines, two more window lines and go back two more lines.
Even that is, is moving in the right direction to me.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. So that's why a lot of it is hidden in the alley, but that view is, is there as you come up.
So, so why don't we just extend two more lines? So what we'll do is we'll, we'll come up to like here or something.
I think that also will go ways with the, uh, community, the neighborhood.
Okay.
That was one of the comments we saw.
Okay.
Um, and then if you could, their view of the sidewalk cafe in the rendering or the sidewalk seating area, I should say. There is a column supporting the balcony space right in front of the main entrance. I'm wondering if you might. Consider switching to a cantilever for the belt. It looks to me like there's a column coming down right there.
Is that, is that structural or is that? All the way down? Yeah.
Is that carrying each balcony? That's how you designed it?
Yes, and it, so as you.
It's this one right here. Sorry. It's going there. Hold on. It's getting there. Right? We're talking about this column right here.
Yeah.
This column, yeah, but if you go back to the, to the Fifth Avenue elevation.
I'm, I'm just wondering if you might be able to cantilever the beam off the. Out for the balcony. I don't know how much, what kind of load you're carrying there. It shouldn't be too significant.
Yeah.
Nope.
Well, one of the things that the column does is. It also, we have, there's actually another column I hear, but it also defines the, we, we put the entrance to. The lobby to the main part of the building. I, I think if you remember, we originally had that as kind of a glass tower. And there was some concern about that being all glass and the light. And so what we did was we opened it up and made it a little bit more. Transparent with the balconies and took the corner and actually made it a recess instead of bringing it out. So we actually lost that definition of the entrance or what is the entrance to the building. So. A column on that corner and being right there kind of helps define that. And then we have the planter next to the. That, so you would, you're not, it doesn't just spill out into that cafe space or the seating area. There is, it's minimal, but it, it does help define it. But it also, it's a big cantilever to come out that far.
It looks like it's far enough away from the entrance that it shouldn't be, uh, like a programming issue to get things in and out of the, uh, uh, what are the other commissioners thinking here?
That, that makes sense.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, no, we, we're, we're. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll make sure that the, the door is not like, the column is not in the middle of a door leaf, right?
Yeah.
It's not, right, right.
Or even that the door can open, not just in the middle, but you know, that it's not like.
No, no, absolutely.
A wall or.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And I think it's about eight feet back. Columns.
Okay.
Pretty far out.
Right, right, right.
You'll still be able to go around, you'll be able to enter off Fifth Avenue and.
Column will be farther out.
Um, those were my comments for the architectural stuff. I might come back to others.
Um, I've got a couple.
Sure.
Um, let me save you some money. Get rid of those lovers.
Those little what?
The eyebrows on the top floor.
Okay.
I think it makes it much too busy and it has no context, really.
All right, my construction guys will have, be very happy about that.
I'm looking at the one that, uh, I'm looking northwest from Federal.
Okay. This is it.
You can, you can see him on here too, yeah.
Yeah, the little eyebrows on the top floor.
Yeah.
I think it's too busy. But.
Do you have a?
It's a sun shade.
It's fine.
I know that King's One doesn't show them.
No, we don't have any in King's One.
It's not a hill I'm gonna die on, but I.
No.
It's a better design without them personally.
Okay.
Uh, the only other thing I had was, um. Are you going to give us an idea of what the actual materials look like, like bring in samples or something like that?
Sure. We, we haven't called out on the elevations. Um, but we could, we, we usually, I mean, we could submit it. We could submit some materials. I think we have in the past. I don't know where they went, but. We, we definitely have in the past.
I saw them last time.
Yeah, no, I know. So we have to.
So is.
Okay.
Uh, the section in the middle that's a lighter red, is that really a lighter red or is that the same color as the bricks, the rest of the brick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so adding two more rows of brick around the alley and get rid of the eyebrows. Those are the two comments and make sure the col, that we could e, ingress and egress, uh. Um, to the building entrance and that column is not in the way.
I've got a comment as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Nick can probably guess where I'm going with this one. It's the corner, uh, turning radii on that corner, uh, a fifth that, it's a one-way. I know that we have this theoretical project coming down the pike with, uh, Federal Street improvements, but. There's no start date, there's no end date. Seeing if you guys are, are you moving curb there and touching curb?
We could.
I mean, they, they, they will do that as part of their curb ramp. So if you want that radii tightened up, that would be the time to do it. Because we need to do a curb ramp across, I think we need to do a curb ramp across Fifth there.
Yeah.
That's all necessary.
We're just.
I mean, I think the minimum is what a five foot turning radii, I mean, it's not a.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
That's. Yeah, it's my only comment. We, we do have to anticipate emergency services not obeying one ways. That aside, it doesn't need to be that big. Right. Cause they can also drive up on a sidewalk. I think, I think.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And, and we could have, we could have Nick work for Aaron in his office and try to figure that out.
Steve Strickman, it'd all right if I coordinated that.
I'd rather have Aaron coordinated than, than Steve. Yeah, I want, Steve, you know, that gives you one less thing to do as well, so. That's my only comment.
Okay.
Bill, anything?
Yeah, I'd also like to turn to public comment.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, I, I wanted to say thank you for the work on activating the roof space. Um, that's exciting to see. I think it's a great. Opportunity for more new developments in Troy to make use of the views of the river and just the atmosphere that that contributes. Um, all right, so turning it over to public comment, um, anyone present in person?
Hi, Lisa Rodriguez again, nineteen eighty-six Fifteenth Street here in Troy and also an employee of TAP Incorporated. I want to say that, um, this design has come a long way. Thank you for working with the neighborhood. I think Barbara Higbee would be happy that it's moved so far. I'm speaking either for or against it. Uh, but I, I do like the direction that it's going in. Uh, I just wanna say, I don't know if they've mentioned what the masonry material is. But I'm not a fan of the thin brick on this building and I think it may even already be bulging. And I would hope that the masonry proposed on this would be a fill brick and not paste it on half inch thick. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing anyone else from the public in person, anyone on Zoom? Oh, I see you've got a few hands already. All right. Dreah?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Dreah Lianza. I live at twenty-two, twenty-seven Fifth Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, just, uh, before I, I make a couple of comments. Uh, there were several questions we couldn't hear the answers to. I think maybe people were turning away from the microphone. While they were answering them, especially about the plans for the old buildings. Um, so, uh. Uh, we may be making some comments that had been answered, but they just were not audible, um, on Zoom. Um, also, the plans for the old buildings were not available for review by the public before this meeting. So we need time to review the plans before being able to comment on them. Okay, um, we do not consider that, oh, and I'm a member of, uh, Neighbors Protecting Neighborhoods. Who, uh, everybody on the commission knows we've been working on this for a long time. We do not consider that all the previous neighbors comments have been addressed. NPN still opposes this project. We sent a document, everybody on the planning commission. And planning department last week should have gotten a copy of this document with our objections and a detailed discussion of why we oppose. Oversight is still a major concern. We still have not seen the details of how the developer will be held accountable. To build the project that may eventually be approved. There, uh, at, at the time, when I went to look at the link to this. Project that was, um, in the, uh, agenda that was sent out, there were, uh, no. Uh, descriptions or plans of the demolition and renovations of the old buildings on Fifth Avenue. So we haven't had the time to look at that yet. Uh, we still need more time to comment on them. And, uh. We, uh, definitely want to have that, uh, be part of what we're looking at. The seeker review. This project had a failed neg deck vote in August of twenty twenty-one. So the failure of that vote means that the required seeker review has not been completed. The review needs to be completed before this project can be approved. Uh, this includes a review of the changes in the project, especially regarding the old buildings and, uh, involvement of ship all. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dreah. Barb, I see you have your hand up.
On mute here. Hi, I'm Barb Nelson and I'm, um, an architect at TAP and also, um. Concerned with the complete streets aspects of, uh, and, and the general planning, um. Impacts of the project. So I kind of zoom out to a full neighborhood view and I've, I've done my own little, you know, Barbara sketches. Um, and I see that if, if we were to really work on this, this four block area, we could probably see another thirty. Or so on-street parking spaces, clean up some curbs, improve some pedestrian crossings. I'd, I'd like to suggest that, uh, I'd like, I'd like to hear some kind of commitment from engineering and planning that, um. This. That a, that a, that a study could be done. I, I don't know who would, would fund it, but, um. It, it could even be a sketch study that the Complete Streets group, uh, works on, but. I, I think something that would improve the stress that this, the parking and traffic stress that this project will create. Um, because it does. I mean, we know there's no parking required. We know there's thirty-six units or spaces provided. Uh, make that twenty-eight if we, if we subtract the eight. Um, for King's Landing one, but, um. There, there is a lot to be improved in this neighborhood to, to, to improve its walkability and its safety. So if you, um. Look through the information that was sent, uh, you'll see that and I, I think it's worth some study. Um, I'm very happy to see that any, um, permanent improvements, uh, to make Fifth. And Jacob a parking lot, you know, have been removed from this plan. That's a great move. Um, we can do much better than more parking lots. A quarter of this four-block area, uh, is already. Open surface lots and it's just a. You know, it's just a problem for the cityscape, for the, for the streetscape, for the stormwater runoff or water quality. So. I'm hopeful that construction in this area, I know that this is one development. Um, I know there are others that are brewing and, um, I hope we can, you know, take a look at that whole. Area and approve each project as it fits within a, um, an acceptable vision. Uh, for this area, a vision that does not include acres more of surface parking lots. Um, so I look forward to working. So I look forward to working uh with the Complete Streets Group on that and with the planning department as uh however it's appropriate. I really um want to see the city of Troy incentivize um collaboration with private lot owners so that uh unneeded spaces, you know, that that the McNeil Apartments parking lot is never full. Um, in fact, there's a several spaces that the that the tenants use, residents use for picnicking. Um, so some, which would be great if we if we could uh kind of improve their space so that they're not picnicking on a parking lot, turn some of it green and and encourage some interaction between new developers and existing owners so that uh space lots can be can be shared. Again, this this development will put pressure and change the the quality of life on um on this neighborhood due to the need for additional parking spaces. And it's just a fact of life. We we need our people will always have cars. We will always need a place to put them. Hopefully it will reduce, hopefully over time they'll all be electric and we'll have more bikes and buses. But um our cars are uh they're they're important uh market, you know, BDC wouldn't even be providing what they are if they didn't believe it was important to market uh the marketability of their property. So I think that's, yeah, I think that's majority, just really um glad to see Fifth and and Jacob open for a positive uh development and uh hoping that this exercise, this years-long exercise in how this new development fits into an historic neighborhood will that will carry some lessons um learned from there uh as as we see uh positive developments through the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Joe Farmer?
You're on mute, Joe. Okay, I'm unmuted now. Thank you very much. Um Trudy Hamner, Hamner and I uh worked together to address the subject of unit design. The entire, this this represents the position of NPN on that subject. And our statement covered five different aspects of the question. Uh, this is a very brief summary for those who may not have had a chance to read everything, uh just clarify what we're getting at in each point and you'll have to go back to the text to find the details. The first point was how units are designed and constructed matters. Uh, NPN again asserts that it does not object to students. If there is a reasonable balance to be to the project, I I we do not object to students if there is a reasonable balance to the project. NPN objects to dorm room units because they will never be suitable for families. Kings Landing One was originally described to the Troy LDC as containing only twenty percent student-style units. By the end of the process, it was approved for twenty-seven market rate and twenty-eight student union units. We now know that the project as constructed has no market-rate apartments. And this is the question that we request the planning commission to determine. How many of the proposed units would be appropriate for a family? Twenty-seven market-rate units were lost when Kings Landing One was constructed with a hundred percent student units, dorm units. It is critical to the nature of the neighborhood that the TPC uh require a reasonable balance of students and family and that the number be made a condition of the approval. Number two, the current proposal incorporates significant changes. NPN appreciates the fact that BDC has, for the first time, significantly changed its proposal for the better. But given BDC's track record with both KL one and prior versions of KL two, the new proposal should submit to a thorough review by all the agencies that reviewed the prior submissions. The agencies include not only the planning commission, but also the the local development corporation and the New York State Historic Preservation. Number three, the current submission is an opportunity to balance the negative impacts of the KL one project. It has noted be been noted before and in my earlier remarks, KL two provides an opportunity to mitigate the harm done to the Fifth Avenue neighborhood when twenty-seven market units vanished between approval and construction of the already occupied Kings Landing One. If all forty-two units were designated market rate, the nature of the approved project would begin to resemble the unit mix presented to the planning commission. NPN thinks this is the proper settlement of the issue. Number four, the comprehensive plan identifies strengthening existing neighborhoods as a goal. The comprehensive plan for the city of Troy adopted in twenty eighteen is a blueprint for community transformation aimed at enhancing prosperity, community well-being, and the quality of life and opportunity the city of Troy offers its citizens. That's quote. Further, one of its goals is to, quote, strengthen and promote the city's diverse neighborhoods. Creating Kings Landing Two with forty-two units, if none of them are market apartments, will not strengthen the Fifth Avenue neighborhood. In fact, it will do the opposite. Number five, the planning commission, the LDC and then and the shipo, the New York State Shipo, are the guardians of the public interest. NPN requests that the planning commission instruct the developer to clarify the number of market and student housing units so that the planning commission can fully evaluate the community impact of the project as required in their seeker review. We also ask, um, I I'd like to say that um I we'd like to echo what Dreya said earlier. We we just got a quick glimpse at the floor plan uh for the existing buildings. Uh, and and quite frankly, uh what I saw I liked, uh but I saw it for the first time tonight on the presentation and and I think um that um some some more serious review of how those those buildings are being planned planned uh needs to be, needs to be made before this is approved. Uh, we also asked the planning commission to set up procedures and precise language in the resolution to avoid a repeat of of Kings Landing One unauthorized changes. NPN also asks the LDC and the shipo to require detailed information so they can fully understand the nature of the projects they are approving. If you have more in questions about uh what I just said, uh there's a lot more of words in the uh text which was submitted to the planning commission. I believe that's also available on our website. Thank you very much uh for everything throughout this process.
Thank you, Joe. I just want to make sure I'm understanding NPN's position on the uh on the use type for for the units. Really, as it pertains to what would be, what's under our purview, is it that the impact to the neighborhood um in terms of parking pressure is the concern here? Is it because uh as we've been through several times, the use uh or the specifics of it being student housing is not something that we are are evaluating?
No, it's it it really is the nature of the apartment and not the nature of the tenant that we're concerned about. If if all the apartments are constructed in such a way that uh families, uh not every apartment, but but a reasonable number of the apartments can can house a family with kids. Not, you know, not not ten kids, but two kids, let's say. If that if that is done and students move in, so be it. But when the students, if the students, if and when the students move out, a family would be interested in that apartment. And that's the, that is the fundamental uh issue with with apartment design. Well, as the as Kings Landing um uh one was constructed, you you're just not going to find any family with kids that's really ain't going to be interested in those apartments. Because they're separate leases, they'll be separately leased to strangers. You'd be living with you and your kids in 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 a crowded situation with a stranger in the other bedroom.
Right, but I as it pertains to the planning commission, that's not a relevant factor. So I guess in terms of.
But that's a point I would disagree with because it's a relevant factor because because the shipo, uh the seeker review talks about neighborhood impact. And there is a very concise neighborhood impact when the fifty-two, I think it's fifty-two units in Kings Landing One are of no interest to any family interested in living in that block.
I I mean, the other, the other thing I would add to is is this is a site plan review. I mean, this is not a floor plan review. You know, the applicant was gracious enough to show us what might be done inside of the units. But but that's not something that's necessarily under our purview, review.
So I'm sorry, uh who 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 just said that?
This is James Raff.
Oh, uh, hi, James. Um, well, I I respectfully disagree. I I think that the seeker review talks about community impact. And the nature of the um apartments uh is is, and this may be a product, a a a point that you don't have the coverage that the explicit coverage that you should have in in reviewing uh the impact on on the neighborhood. But but, you know, from my point of view, these uh these units do not house a household and therefore are not apartments and therefore should be ex- uh defined and clarified where it is and is not not uh acceptable to build this kind of house.
Right.
Joe?
Mr. Farmer, can you tell, can you point to what in the site plan?
I'll make sure you're going into the mic.
Am I talking in the back? Oh, you just.
Uh, I'm sorry. What was the, can I point to what?
Almost touch.
It's the other way. Can you hear me, Mr. Farmer?
I I am not, not too well. I have, I've heard everything else fine, but.
No, any room. So give me a chance. Can you point to what in the in in the site plan submissions or in apartment designs would identify what's a market-grade apartment as opposed to what's a student apartment? Because I look at the apartment designs and they're just apartments. What do you see?
That, I have to say, I have not uh had a chance to look at the Kings Landing Two. But Kings Landing One floor plan labels market and student, and they are notably different kinds of apartments.
But I don't see labels in this plan that describe whether the apartments are just intended for student uses or the type of leases you're talking about. They're just, and they were submitted, I understand graciously because this is generally beyond what we do because I'm new here, but they're there and you look at them and I see nothing in the design of the apartment that differentiates these apartments from any other apartment. They'd be perfectly appropriate for families.
I I also just want to add that, like, it is absolutely, we have no place indicating who lives in a type of building. This is a this is an argument that's been made for decades against low-income housing in favor of high-income housing, and it's an argument that I I just don't think is any place in our in our decision-making process.
Well, I would, I would never argue, uh, I would never argue an argument that I thought was simply uh implied discrimination against lower-income people. Um, uh, and and I would say quite frankly, that I have not uh done a thorough look at Kings Landing Two apartments because I think that's a decision in the planning commission's hands right now. If you're, if if you all look, if if you'd like me to review it, I'd be glad to. But if you look at it and you're satisfied that these are apartments that a family can move into, uh then you don't have a problem.
So.
I will, I'm I'm happy to say that because a lot has gotten better about this project.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess this is a comment to my, to the fellow commissioners. So the the closest connection I can see from that line of inquiry is really about neighborhood or neighborhood character. That's the closest you could tie that argument to.
Yes.
It's subjective. It's ultimately.
Do you want to close the, or it's not close the period, but do we, I the, that's that's over for tonight, I would say.
I think there may be at least, we haven't checked. Yes, is there anyone else here?
I'm just hoping we can talk amongst ourselves.
Okay. Could I make a quick comment on the floor plan that doesn't need to be submitted but was? Okay. Because, no, clarify, um, there are two-bedroom apartments that are shown with, I guess, two bathrooms. Is that, am I not an architect, but I'm pretty sure that those are two bathrooms. Maybe that's what the concern would be, right? Is that, are they going to be laid out as a suite? As or or something like that as opposed to.
That was a comment that was brought up in the past.
I still think that, I think James and Bill are both correct in that, and Roddy as well, that that's not, that still isn't necessarily the purview of the planning commission. But I think that might be Joe's, what Joe's getting at, right? Is that, oh, well, if it was a for a family, you just have, I guess, the one bathroom in the two-bedroom apartment as opposed to two or something like that.
Did you want to say something?
You have absolutely no jurisdiction over the interior design of the building.
Right.
Um, and and the use has been determined to be allowable in the zone. There is no, there is a definition of a dormitory use, which I guess is what is referring to a student housing in the code, but it specifically says that the dorm has to be owned by the university of school. Because this is going to be privately owned, it doesn't meet the definition of a dormitory, so it is a multi-family um building under our code. You can't get to who's going to be renting. It just, it's way beyond your purview.
And and the argument on.
But that's not what I am talking about. I I'm talking about the unit design.
The 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 argument that, you know, we should be making an assumption and and changing the way we analyze the seeker to me is also just completely inappropriate. I mean, we're we're going to be making a slew of assumptions on how certain people would be acting or behaving, which I I don't think is applicable at all to our our jurisdiction here or what we can really base our decisions off of, so.
I tend to agree, and I think we've addressed a lot of the concrete tangible opposition items that that were there previously. Um, I do want to make sure we get through all of the public comment. I'm not seeing other hands raised. If if you could um unmute yourself.
Yeah. The the one and only comment I want to make is that that, to my recollection, every planning commission that I.
Sorry.
Uh, hi, this is Paul Sacco. I have my hand raised on Zoom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, hi, this is Paul Sacco, twenty-one forty-eight Fifth Avenue. Uh, I appreciate the commissioners um commenting on the busyness of the exterior design um and and how it's viewable from other parts of Troy, including historic districts. Uh, I would encourage you to insist on even more brick. I think the fifth floor being that light blue cladding is discordant and busy, uh doesn't match the neighborhood or other parts of Troy. Sorry for that honky horn. Can't do anything about it. And also, if there are any exterior requirements you want in, uh I encourage you to make them binding in some way. This is a developer who has um not lived up to the presentations they made with Kings Landing One as far as the exterior and sidewalk scape of the building. So that needs to be factored in when you, if you decide to approve this project. Uh, and then thirdly, if the developer is talking about the expense of putting up actual masonry or something a little better than what they did with the first building or covering more surface area, I would like to point out that with Kings Landing One, uh, the rents they are asking um for the units greatly exceed what they projected in the presentation. Uh, I forget which commission it was, or there's the LDC or the BDC uh when they got their tax abatement. And so that should be factored in when the developer says they can't afford it. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Okay, um, without any other new new commenters, um, I think we can close public comment. If I missed you and and you hadn't had a chance to speak, please raise your hand right now on Zoom. Okay. Alright, um, so returning to commissioner comments, I guess I I have a few categories here. I do also agree we need to come up with some system to ensure that and recognize that enforcement is responsible for this. We've heard a lot of turnover what getting, what gets built matching what's being proposed here. what getting, what gets built matching what's being proposed here. It, I was thinking about ways to do that, wondering if maybe we can tie planning uh commissioners in on uh maybe submittal reviews that happen or exterior envelope.
I, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, what is being submitted series is like architectural drawings. Planning, there's no purview outside of the approval this evening. Department is asked with reviewing um building permit to use, go through the, the architectural drawings, determine whether or not client the planning commission's approval, um, but the planning commission doesn't, there's no, there's no mechanism by which you.
The mechanism would be a condition on approval that we're involved or an approver in the submittal review process. That would be the mechanism.
I, I don't know that I want to, you know, be tasked with reviewing or doing somebody else's job and, you know, it puts, it puts a responsibility on us that we.
It's a, it's a precedent. I, I, I mean, I guess I would, I would defer to counsel.
Once, should this project proceed from here, um, the next step would be submission to the uh building department for plans for, for building permit. The jurisdiction to review those plans uh is completely within the purview of the building inspector uh for compliance with the state building code. Um, but also for compliance with any city approvals uh that were also necessary, which would be your approval. So one of the steps um of, of the permit view process would be compliance with any of your conditions. Um, that is the responsibility of the building department. Um, and then once the building permit is issued, uh, the, are, uh, milestone inspections will take place as the building is being constructed to confirm that the building is being constructed in conformity with the state building code. That is the process. Um, that is the process for every structure uh i- i- in the city of Troy. The fact that there may have been deviations uh for the neighboring building um, in my opinion, doesn't create a presumption that it's going to happen again or create a presumption that the, the process as it exists and the review process that is in place is somehow deficient. Um, I, I don't believe it is. My experience with the building department is that they, they are very good at what they do a- a- and they make sure uh in, in most instances I'm familiar with that what gets built is, is what was, was approved.
That's really the issue at hand is whether or not the process is working. And I, I think a lot of the comment we're hearing is at least in the one instance it did. So looking at options for safeguards or belt and suspenders approaches.
A- a- and theoretically, if something gets constructed and clearly the internal construction, we're not involved in that. We don't know if something's one foot away from where it was. We're not going to know that. But if the building itself looks different than what you approved when it's built, then it is a problem because it's a violation of your approval. And any permits or certificate of occupancy theoretically could be uh withheld or revoked until it's in compliance with your site plan approval. So your site plan approval is approving a, a building that loo- looks a certain way. If what gets built looks something completely different, then that is an enforcement issue that you need to raise because it's, it's a violation of the condition in the approval that you grant. The process would be to refer your concerns, whether or not you identify them yourselves or they're brought to you by the public to the building department and say, hey, that building uh violates our site plan approval or the conditions of our site plan approval and it becomes enforcement matter through the building department. But I think that's the appropriate mechanism to ensure uh what you approve is what can.
This happened recently and was it, I think it was Schenectady.
And microphone.
Yeah, I think this happened recently in Schenectady where I think a developer built a, an additional story on a building.
Yes.
I think it was Schenectady and they stopped it immediately, stop work order and he had to go through the entire planning process again in order to get that approved. And if there were any changes that came out as a result of it, then, then that was, you know, that was on him for doing that.
So it sounds like we do have a separate thing to address.
The mechanism has, the mechanism has always been in place, which would, would the, the, the opposition this evening is communicating is that they feel that King's Landing one was not built in conformance with the approval. I was on the commission at the time. It was, it was built in conformance with the approval. I understand that's not their opinion, but that's not a matter of fact.
Including materials.
And materials were substantially similar to the materials that were presented. Absolutely. It's, it, it, I understand some people do not have that opinion that they are incorrect.
Okay, Steve, I see.
I was just going to address that what was frequently referred to as LDC, the IDA will be approving any benefits. And we will take a very close look this time at number of bedrooms, number of units. So that will be written into that document. So I'm not, any, when we get to that point. So I just wanted to clarify that. So that's another review process that I'm sure the neighborhood will be at that as well. We'll have a careful vetting of the pro forma to look at what benefits are appropriate based on income that will be tied to number of units, basically. And bedrooms.
Thanks, Steve.
There was one comment that was made by the public that I, I think would be great to have a response to if, uh, the applicants don't mind. It's just, uh, one of the, uh, let's see what page it's on, just so, uh, it's not, not numbered, but they had, um, put together a little sketch just north of the property along adjacent to where the, the parking lot was previously proposed. Um, a way to add a couple of parking spaces and, and just an offset improvement on that Columbus Square area. Did you have any comments on that? Is that something you had considered or something you would consider?
Nick, I mean.
I, I, I don't think, I, I don't think it's appropriate to have parking in that circle. I mean.
Now, the, what they've shown is, is a basically moving curb to add, to, to, to block off the, the previous existing street that's now been decommissioned or, or not decommissioned, but closed off. And so it would just be basically a permanent improvement there.
That would have to be.
He would add a couple of parking spaces onto the street. We're talking the uh appendix.
Columbus.
King.
Columbus.
Columbus.
Square.
Yeah, triangles.
Triangles.
Thank you.
I know. Um, yeah, yeah, the, the appendix that was after the, uh, water main break on.
Yeah, yeah, it's, the, the, one of the neighbor co- comments was, was making that more official as a way to mitigate the impact of this project. And I was just asking the applicant if they had a, had considered that.
My, my response, James, is that.
Please make sure you talk into the mic. Uh, yeah, sorry about that. My response is that, uh, unless there's a, a master plan of what's going to be done in that area, uh, just moving and installing Kirby.
Yeah.
Could be a, uh, really a wasted effort if there's something that is going to come five years down the road and is going to remove all of that. So, uh, I, I'm not, uh, I mean, I, I don't want to speak, speak for Cosmo, but I'm not into doing something that's on a temporary basis that, you know, would, would be an add, add, add on expense.
Yeah, I, I, and I understand the, the expense perspective from our perspective or from my perspective, I'll, I'll say it would be a, a benefit that would be added to the community and it would mitigate some of the impact the project might have. Um, I think it would be a nice improvement. I think it would go a long way with the community. I think even comments they made about, uh, O'Neill's apartments and
Right.
the lack of a public space to, to congregate because the, the outdoor seating that's being shown here is, is wonderful, but the assumption is that that will be a private use, you know, it won't be public seating open to anybody. Is that, is that correct?
No, I, I, I think that that will, depending on what goes into that retail space, uh, any, any pedestrian that uses that, uh, that sidewalk could walk in there, grab a, a cup of coffee and sit outside and have a conversation.
But it would be a, it would be private use. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, a public benefi- or public good that somebody walking down the street without going in and purchasing a cup of coffee could sit there and, and enjoy and. Right, right, okay. So, so yes, so my, my comment is, is asking or my question is asking whether or not you had considered it. I understand that there's no, uh, developed master plan, but from working with the city, it seems like the, the direction that's going in is pretty clear and that it's not going to be opened back up to traffic. It seems like it's a, a positive change in the community. And again, so the, the question is, would you consider closing that off permanently? Just, just curbing it off and then therefore there would be room for, for parking.
I understand your comments.
Yeah.
I would prefer this, the city handle that project. Um, and it's not, it, it, it's simply for coordinate, well, for coordination sake, there's a lot going on there, um, which is why we haven't, we have not addressed it yet.
Oh, that's why?
Uh, well, that and budgets, but, but it, it's a more complicated, it is a more complicated thing. And to Nick's point, um, I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want curbing to be installed there without a figure because we're, we're trying to think if there's a way to reprogram that area.
I guess there's, you, you don't have to answer the question.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's a great idea. It's like, but, yeah, we, we have, there's a lot of thought that has to go into it. It's a, it is a, um, part of it. It's a public park. Um, so there's the question of decommissioning the street, the legalities of, 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 for the process by which we can do that requires council action. So there's a lot of moving parts to it.
That's fine.
It's on my list of things to do.
Anybody else?
Any other commissioner comments, questions? So, I mean, right now, action-wise, we're looking for a, a declaration for secret purposes. As was previously mentioned, we had a, was it a stalemate or a tied vote on, on a neg deck?
It was a two-two vote.
It was a two-two vote. So here we have five voting members.
You, you guys are a seven-member board with six members appointed. Anything you guys, any actions you take tonight would have to be four to one.
Right. So, so I'm, I'm, a motion in a second a- as normal, but any, for anything to pass would require four votes regardless of what the motion is.
Okay. And then I, I guess just before we get to that stage, I'm curious what the appetite is for site plan approval if, if we got to that stage or are we looking for anything else before, um, before we get to that point?
I think there's a handful of things that need to be addressed, but I don't think that they need to be addressed by the planning commission in another meeting.
Okay, anything for you that you'd need to see? Okay, same.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are some things, like I know Suzanne had mentioned, uh, sorry. I know Suzanne had mentioned same material sample. That is something that I'd love to see too, considering that there have been a lot of public comments about materials. Thanks. Uh, I was just saying, I would like to see material samples. I, I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed in another meeting. I'd be interested to hear what Suzanne thinks.
Maybe we could make it a condition.
I'm like.
Maybe we could make it.
To, to Roddy's point earlier, we have done that. So precedent has been that if the commission is not clear on the materials that are being, but, you know, the rendering is okay, the, uh, what they're calling out, right, aluminum, brick, those types of things are okay, but the commission would like to see they, they, we have in the past appointed, I think it was two members that would, that would come into um either the planning or engineering office and review those materials before uh building permits are approved.
That's basically what I was suggesting.
So, so that's like a, we, architecturals, subcommittee, yes, yeah, yeah.
That's acceptable to me.
Sounds like we have two volunteers.
As a condition, we would need, we would need those members. I think we would need them tonight or now as a condition, like who's going to be on the subcommittee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, theoretically, you could nominate Sarah, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Can we just leave it that there'll be two members? Not have the exact people tonight. I could, it can, yeah, with the condition in that case.
If I had to nominate, I would nominate, uh, Sarah and Suzanne. Um, and, and if the commissioners feel that that's acceptable, that, that would be, that would be my advice. Those are the two, two members of your commission that have the most experience in those.
I'd be fine with that. I'd be fine also with holding off on identifying Sarah until she's here to say yes or no.
I, I, I think if, if you did nominate her and she for some reason wasn't able to accept the nomination, she could withdraw. So what I would suggest is if you're going to nominate her, um, a- a- and Suzanne, that's great, but also nominate an alternate in a case Sarah can't.
We can also nominate two people who are here and one of them can consult with Sarah, you know, r- right?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so A- Anthony, you seemed interested. I, I think it would make sense if we.
I'd be fine with that unless Roddy.
No, that's fine.
Don't want more work?
Yeah, if, if other people, you know, if Sarah wants to see them and, and, and provide insight, then she has every right to do so. But we don't need to volunteer her for something that she can't even speak to right now, so.
Okay, so let's put that in. Uh, you want to help us out here?
Well, we gotta.
Um, oh, yeah, true. Wait, first we have to do our seeker.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I will make a motion, uh, that we, uh, declare a negative declaration for the seeker on the project.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. Um, all right, moving to a vote, well.
I approve a second. And how am I going about this? Just, well, you have a proven negatives. It's really sort of complicated to movies. But I, I support the motion.
The motion is to issue a negative declaration.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, and I also vote yes, in case. All right, so then moving on to site plan approval. Um, I'm gonna, I, I think I'll take a stab at it, or do you want?
Wha- wha- what I would suggest is discuss amongst yourselves any conditions that you think you want to see. We've seen this project a number of times. A lot of things have come up. Um, just discuss amongst yourselves because you may not remember the whole list of some conditions that other board members may want to say.
Fair enough.
Start a, a, a list. It'll make it easier when someone makes the motion.
Right, so I, I think number one, I would say the condition is that the materials to be used, uh, so what for the exterior, I don't know if there's anything else we need to specify uh that samples be submitted and reviewed by an architectural subcommittee of this commission to consist of myself and Suzanne Spellin or an alternate, uh, if, if deemed necessary or appropriate.
Okay, I know another condition was the addition of the two, uh, column lines or window bays. I can't remember how you agreed to it. Right, so what I, what I would recommend, if I can, is have the two appointees have final, you know, a- approval of the materials and the little architectural features that we spoke about tonight. Does that make sense?
It does.
Sure. Okay, that's fine. All right, so we'll put those items under the.
Architectural subcommittees.
Yeah, because the only, the only other architectural comment I think was Suzanne's about the.
The eyebrows. It was the eye, the eyebrows.
And then extending them.
The brick and make sure the column is not in the way of the entrance.
So the condition would be that, that exterior materials and minor architectural modifications will be submitted to the architectural subcommittee for review and approval.
Right. And then were there other conditions from our previous meetings or anything else that we had seen or wanted to?
The other comment I had was the turning radii on the, or turning radius on the, um, that one corner.
Which, which I will say, um, we did actually do the curb ramp in that area, but we can still address that. We can still address it.
Yeah.
As part of this project because there'll be a lot of construction in the area. I'm sure there'll be a need to, to touch that sidewalk again.
Great. I don't think that all has to go into stipulation, just what I said.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And I, you lost me on that one. I, I, I didn't.
Uh, re- reduce the, reduce the radius of the, uh, the north, northwestern corner of Fifth and Federal.
Southwest? The one right on.
Yeah.
Southwest.
Oh, it's southwest.
Right there in that image?
Southeast.
Oh, boy.
So, oh no, southwest, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one.
You're right, you're right. So that corner is.
The southwest corner of, it's this, it's the north west corner of Federal and Fifth.
Yeah, but it's this, it's the south corner of the.
Of the building. It's the southeast corner of the building, northwest of, so you're both right.
Thanks, Cosmo. That's what, that's what we needed.
So, so I have it as reduce the radius of the northwest corner of Fifth and Federal.
Yeah.
Uh, if that's acceptable to the commission, I think we should also check, does the applicant and his engineer understand what's, what's required there?
Yes, we.
I, I almost want to specify the, the radius, but Aaron, Aaron, you're going to review that? Is that something?
I, I just, I wouldn't be prepared to make a call this evening. I, I want to get a feel for what types of vehicles are making that turn and take a look at it.
Reduce the radius of the northwest corner of Fifth and Federal to the satisfaction of the city engineer?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other conditions? Okay.
Do we need to stipulate any of the other modifications that, that were brought up? You know, there were, there were things about the things that were.
The only four things I have given the eyebrows. Work with Aaron to turn up the curb.
Cosmo, the, the, the modifications that you had presented. Cosmo, the, the, the modifications that you had presented today, if any of them weren't on the site plan, I'm just trying.
No, everything that, everything that's on the site.
How? You know.
Well, you know what we should do? I mean, we, we'll have the resolution and then what we'll do is we'll submit plans. Get final stamps, right? The architectural and, and the civil engineering plans. And then based on that, we'll go get our permit.
I don't really wanna do it the way he says it necessarily. I just wanna make sure we're all comfortable with it as well. Um, you know, other, other things that were brought up, you know, things like, uh, conversation with O'Neill apartments. Is that something that we wanna stipulate? There's, there's a, a log of, or documented.
Yeah.
Their discussions with them at least. No?
You. In my experience, you, you, it's, it's difficult because you're involving another party, a third party to the.
We obviously can't stipulate that they have a discussion.
Well, right.
But just that a log, you know, some sort of documentation that there was an attempt is submitted, you know, it does, I'm not, that's not a hill I'm willing to die on. I'm just bringing it up.
Condition, I think it would be that, um, BDC send written correspondence to O'Neill Apartments copying, um, the planning commission.
That's fine.
And that would be, that would be, it would be a letter of requests to.
Yeah.
What have you. And, you know, if they, the, the thing is they could ignore it.
Yeah.
I have in the past seen when there's multiple opportunities for a parking agreement, that a stipulation be that the parking agreement be obtained, but when you.
I'm not trying to, I, I don't wanna go that far.
Right.
Right. I understand that. And I don't necessarily think it needs to be a stipulation, but it's something that we discussed and I wanted to bring it up now.
Understood.
So if anybody else, if there's anything else like that that came up that people are remembering them, we've talked about a lot of details, so.
I, I also would tend towards not putting it as an actual condition, but ask that you still do so in good faith.
That's fine.
And anything an applicant agrees to on the record becomes part of, of the approval. It doesn't have to specifically be a condition. So if they say they're going, they agree to do something.
Well, there we go. We just did that. There was a verb, uh, a, a, a nod for the record?
Yes, I will, I will, uh, contact O'Neill Apartments.
Okay. We, um, is that it now?
That's, I, I have nothing else.
I think that's it.
Okay.
You guys don't wanna listen to this case like every, every month for the rest of the year?
Can, can I just remind you that there was the discussion about bringing the brick further back?
That's part of the architectural.
The architectural.
Okay.
Okay. So carrying those conditions, I would make a motion, uh, that we approve the site plan.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, moving to a vote.
I'm in favor.
Okay, James?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with Suzanne and Anthony and maybe Sarah. So, thank you.
Good night.
If you wanna come back next month and just like hang out.
I know you guys love. Yeah. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is this our last one? All right. For our last item is PLPC twenty twenty-two zero zero seven eight, uh, zero, Fourth Street. I've never seen a zero as an address, uh, Detroit atrium. Project. Thank you for your patience as well.
I'm just gonna plug in for a second here.
No, it's, it's coming up.
That I'll need in a second. Let me just. Once again.
And if you wouldn't mind, just before you begin, name an address for, for the record.
Ready?
Right in when you are.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Brian Osterhout with Environmental Design Partnership, um, civil engineer for the applicant Bryce Companies. Uh, I'm here with Ken Cyverson from Cyverson Revuso Architects. And Michael Gastwick, uh, from the Pike Companies, who's, uh, the constructor on this proposed project. So, uh, we really appreciate your time tonight. I know it's been a long night already for everyone. So I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, although this is sizable project. So.
Do you have a presentation up there that you wanna?
I do.
So, uh, could you hit share screen?
Sure.
Yeah, Eric, you might wanna talk over.
Appreciate it. We're gonna go.
Yep, yep. Awesome.
Thank you.
So we're here tonight, um, for the atrium redevelopment, uh, which is the southern half of, uh, the project. And I have some slides that'll kind of show you where, where we're at. Bear with me for one second from current slide. Okay. All right. So, uh, just a general, uh, project and property overview. So it's really the redevelopment of the southern half of the atrium, uh, the project area. That's, uh, in the heart of the city located north of Broadway between Third and Fourth Street. Uh, on the slides that you can, uh, see in front of you. I don't like to do this, but, uh, this is generally referred to as the atrium property. We have the fair building in northwest corner. That's not proposed for any renovations at this time. Uh, we have the center portion, uh, which is actually owned by the city of Troy, uh, which is the glass enclosure. And then the southern half of the project area, which is, uh, the project area that we're discussing here tonight for redevelopment. And just kind of a, uh, another colored view to kind of help orient yourselves. Uh, the red portion here on the left on this slide, uh, slide is the, uh, property that's owned by the city of Troy. Um, the applicant Bryce Company owns the fair building in the northwest corner, as I mentioned, uh, and then the two yellow blocks there. A block to the east of the, uh, fair building and then the southern half, which is again what, what we're here for tonight. So there is some project history and I know some of the members on this planning commission were involved about a year ago. Uh, when, when we came forward with the previous proposal, uh, for the applicant, um, there's also new members of the planning board. So I thought I'd just, uh, spend quick time kind of going through, um, the last, uh, a year ago when we came before the board. The proposal was, um, a, a much larger project, uh, involved pretty much everything, uh, with the exception of the fair building. So to the east, uh, the central portion of the atrium, that's owned by the city of Troy. Uh, and the southern half of the project, which is what, uh, again, this application is for. Um, that project stalled. Um, there were several reasons for that. One is, uh, there was just unpredictable inflated construction costs. As everyone's aware of, the economy and, and supply chain issues and inflation, everything has, uh, has changed dramatically in the last two years, certainly within the last year. The parking garage cost was just not viable. Um, I wanna say that, uh, the estimates that were run by Pike were in the neighborhood of north of thirty-three thousand dollars per parking space for the, uh, parking garage. And with really no way to recoup that cost, it just, uh, it was really one of the things that killed the project. Um, as I think everyone's aware of with the, uh, COVID environment, there's been a changing market condition. The previous proposal a year ago had a lot of commercial space. Uh, commercial space has changed. Um, there's been a much higher need for residential. Uh, and, and really that's what this has come down to is there are certain projects that are financeable, um, you know, with lenders. Um, that's, uh, certainly, uh, a good environment for the apartments, um, not so much for the commercial environment. And lastly, uh, as I mentioned, the, the center portion of, of kind of the overall project is, is the glass enclosed atrium space, which is owned by the city of Troy and, um, and, and maintained by the applicant. And, um, while not necessarily an impossible task, um, it certainly, uh, created difficulties with financing, with moving that, uh, project forward. So the simplified, uh, project, uh, that the applicant has introduced is a five-story, four stories above surface parking and, and two retail corners, which I'll highlight. Of apartments. Um, so that equates to about a hundred apartments. Uh, it's in the B four central commercial zoning district. It's, um, almost exactly one acre in size. As I mentioned, the proposed use is gonna be, uh, some surface parking. And, and I'll show you the site plan in a second here. Just kind of walk you through it. Um, two small retail components that are in the southwest and the southeast corner, uh, of the, uh, surface elevations there. So they're a street level, um, to kind of give it a little bit more of a mixed use flavor. And then apartments above, um, we're talking about, uh, seventy-seven proposed parking spaces, um, even though I believe in the B four district kind of required. Uh, and, um, you know, this is obviously in the, in the center core of, of the city. And so, um, just kind of walking through, and, and again, there's not a lot to the site because, I mean, it's pretty much, you know, surrounded by buildings as, as, as it currently is, but, uh, we are proposing, uh, an access off of, take this with me, we are proposing an access off of Fourth Street, as you can see here. Um, these grayed out areas in the, uh, central and kind of northern portion of the drawing here. Um, those are parking spaces that are open to the elements. So I'd call them exterior surface parking spaces. And then the parking space is interior and underneath the footprint of the apartment buildings. And we have lots of renderings and floor plans to share. So we kind of see that better with some of the other graphics that architects are much better at putting together than engineers. So, um, but again, uh, two small retail spaces in, in these corners, um, we don't necessarily have a tenant yet for those. Um, sure, the applicant has been speaking to some people. Um, this is an amenity, um, utility space here in the northwest corner. Uh, the main lobby, the entrance would be off of Fourth Street here. Uh, we also have a loading zone, uh, kind of in the northeast corner of, of that area. So we would be talking about a curb cut here along Fourth Street. I'm gonna hand it over to Ken to talk a little bit about the architecture.
Okay. Can I ask you a quick question before you do? If you just go back to the last line?
Yeah, of course.
There's a, um, this, the shaded area just south of the building or really all around the building.
Yep.
Is that just, that's just existing sidewalk today?
That's existing sidewalk, right? That is likely to get damaged during construction. So we would be proposing to replace that sidewalk. It's just, it's in all likelihood, something that's just not gonna survive, construction vehicles and so forth.
Got it. Thanks.
Correct. As Brian said, my name is, uh, Ken Cyverson. That's right. And, um, there's the building. Any questions? So our, our design inspiration of this building actually was, uh, the fair building to our northwest. It's a, uh, variegated marble facade. So what we wanted to do was, um, pay homage to it. So we have a, uh, you know, with marble materials. So what we've done is we've actually blended the fair building and took some design elements from the Quack and Bush building to the south. So our, uh, main facade materials, a fiber cement panel on fours, two through five. And they're like alternating colors to kind of replicate the history of variegated marble. So it's a white, gray. And it's a kind of a random pattern that goes throughout the facade and kind of uses its way through and it's kind of dynamic and it's appearance. And then on the first floor, where you kind of touch and feel and you're a pedestrian, we have this masonry, right? It's a, it's a, um, censured panel on the first floor. That's gonna kind of set the base and be very substantial looking for the buildings. We set the building on a nice, firm, steady base. And then we have, uh, two, three, four, five, um, with fiber cement panels. One of the nice features of the, uh, crack and bush building across the street is, uh, it's kind of hard to tell in this rendering, but a lot of the windows have this red window trim surround. So we've got, we, we pulled some inspiration from that. And what we've done is on all of these recesses, you know, instead of doing outbound balconies, because we don't own that property, we did a little recesses to create, uh, a little bit, almost like a townhouse type feel or a row house type feel. And what we've done is we've actually trimmed all of those recesses with that same red band that you see on the Quack and Bush building. So this is really kind of a blend of what's existing on the city block. There's a, um, all modern materials that will hopefully last fifty, seventy years. So, um, it's a nice play on what you see there now. Still no questions? Perfect.
Why don't you wrap the, uh, base around the corners of, um, more marble looking? So right near where that red vertical strip is.
Yep.
It catches my eye that the bottom and a podium section of the building doesn't wrap the corner.
This is the corner.
Uh, no, sorry. Towards the red vertical strip there, like keep going down the street from.
This?
Yeah. And then the gray bottom portion that runs.
This is the same material here?
Yep. And exactly that. Why doesn't it wrap the corner?
This is a flat facade. I don't understand the corner. This.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean by the corner, that little recess.
This is like an accent piece of the entire building. So whenever you have a long city block, two hundred and sixty feet, you don't want one flat side, right? You wanna create some visual interest.
Why that doesn't turn?
At that end.
Oh, the index. We didn't want to. There you go. That's a, that's easy answer.
Now, I'm silly. I have a question about that facade, um, but not the facade itself. Um, is there currently, there's, uh, isn't there access underneath the building there? Or it's, it's like a utility access or something? Is there, um, it didn't look like on your site plan, there was any intent to keep that access there. Is that, is that correct? Now that's not needed, or is that gonna be in the rear of the building or?
You mean to the atrium or to ours? So.
I mean, I, I, let me go, let me go to the next slide. Um, so what I mean is across from Church Street, there's, there's a loading, there's a loading area here that's used for garbage and everything else, right? Is there gonna be, is that gonna remain there? I mean, it looks like it wouldn't now. You'd have.
No.
You'd have that from Fourth Street around the back, right?
Correct. Where the curb cuts proposed, there's a loading zone for that area. So that's been relocated to that area.
Excellent. That's my only question.
To confuse it more, there is a basement and we are keeping a fourth shop, because that's where the electrical switchgear is. As Brian mentioned before, we, this is kind of a, our version of the, um, architectural floor plan with, you know, Third Street on the left, Fourth Street, Broadway. And, um, you know, this, this is, uh, an, an amenity space for the tenants. We have two entries on Third and Fourth. And then this is the twenty feet that you were asking about before, uh, this is on our property line and there's twenty feet of city owned property, property line and Broadway.
So that city owned property is only, is, is not, there's no structure on the city owned property?
No. No.
Our city, the city owned property on the south side of the site, um, it's two parcels.
Right.
It's designated parkland. So the city doesn't even have the ability unilaterally to, to, um, surplus it.
But it's only, it's only the sidewalk area.
It's only the sidewalk. And so that wide sidewalk area will remain a large sidewalk area. Actually, it will be improved as a result.
If you would get it on G I S, sometimes, you know, I know the satellite image is not accurate, but.
Yeah.
It just, sometimes it overlaps and so it's unclear. It's unclear from that.
I, there, there's a possibility the existing structure encroaches on that.
No, actually it doesn't.
Talking about, oh, it doesn't. Perfect. But this is obviously the new one, so.
Just making sure, because I know those persons.
Uh, here's just a typical floor plate of our apartment layout. Um, you can see the interior courtyard, uh, third Broadway, fourth.
This is the, what, what floor are we looking at?
Two, three, four, five. All of a sudden, it'll be the same. So we have Juliet balconies on Broadway. And then we have one corner balcony in the entire project up there. And then twenty-five, twenty-five per floor is a hundred total. And here we just kind of go through and identify what the exterior building materials are. It's a little bit more legible on your versions. Oh.
And, and the, it looks like the other building or, or the other section of the building is highlighted on the map on the left. Is that, what is that pointing towards?
That, that, that's just a similar image that, that just you, that shows the overall project area. It's not that.
So we're still looking between the red brackets.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Broadway.
And so the, the white voids on the bottom here, or what, what is that?
You'll be, that's, um, you're looking into the, under, uh, parking that's underneath. That's twenty feet away. That's a courtyard view. That's kind of a view of the existing atrium as you enter the parking area.
Right. So one of the, one of the other reasons this is expensive is because we have to be able to maintain the city owned atrium space as the city owned atrium space, which is currently connected to the southern half of this project. So I, you know, I know that one of the questions that's going to come up is, well, how are you going to do that? Obviously, that has to be reinforced during construction. And then this is just a simulation of providing some kind of an exterior wall to that atrium space because we're not actually attached to it anymore. There's actually a separation space between this project and where the city owned piece begins, which is the glass. So we actually have to provide an exterior facade to that to make it its own independent space. Is there, um, a couple of questions on that? Is there, um, is there going to be an easement? Is Bryce open to providing an ingress egress easement along that, the face of that wall?
So that you can maintain it?
Sure, uh, but, but, um, my intent, well, yeah, my intent was more, um, moving in and out of the building. Maintenance is still on Bryce as far as.
Correct.
I'm aware. At some point it may not be, but no, it would be more. For that alleyway. It's this big black monolith, right?
Yes.
I'm assuming that there's some, um, some room for discussion on that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that's certainly something.
But the idea would be, uh, the way I envisioned it is because that space is going to be for the farmer's market in the winter. Um, there may be the need to have either man doors or overhead doors or some sort of, you know, just, it might be another way to use some of that space. Um, I don't know that we have much programming in the atrium during the summer, but that might also allow for that as well.
Sure.
Um.
Yeah. So that's actually on the property line. So that's a three hour rated wall as well.
Okay.
So putting a door in that for you would be extremely expensive.
Okay. Um, is that, is the construction of that, such that it would be easy for us to dismantle at a later date? It's all panelized?
Yeah, that's exactly what they are. They're king span panels that are going to span.
And in those panels, when they're removed, could be reused for. Yeah, and we can certainly talk to the applicant about, you know, providing an easement through that area. Understood. You know, and 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 again, you know, open it up to questions. Obviously, it's a slightly or significantly different project than we presented a year ago to those of you who were on the planning commission at that point. Um, you know, at that time, we had good positive momentum for that project. Understand that, you know, market conditions have changed and, you know, but, if I think if you look at what's being proposed here versus what is currently there, which is a gigantic brick facade, that's certainly aged, you know, it's a nice project.
Okay, um, finish it.
Well, just a couple of points. The, the, one of the main goals of tonight's meeting is for the planning commission to declare lead agency. This is a type one secret action. So before anything else can, any action could take place, it needs to go out for the thirty day review period. Um, the other thing, and I think I saw Barb mention it in the chat, is that this is the historic district. So this would have to go to the H R C. They would be one of the agencies you're notifying. So what we could do is have, have the applicant present in front of the H R C. Um, and there might be some possibility of getting comments for the next meeting, although it may, may, you know, result in a two month delay until you guys get that information back from them.
It's going to need significant input from H R C, I would say.
Right.
You know, we're talking at least two meetings with them for a project of this scale, especially in this sensitive of an area. So, I mean, I want to speak for everybody here, but just having worked with the H R C, they're going to be able to provide a lot of, do a lot of the legwork and architectural comments. Um, and I would, I would really look to those three gentlemen for their insight, so.
Are you also saying you think that they should be lead or you?
Not necessarily. No, 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 no. Just, just that before.
The, the H R C actually can't be lead. They're a, uh, yeah, they're a recommendation authority. So they, they provide recommendations to, to, to you and you set the, the policy.
What you may want to consider doing is holding off on your design comments and architectural comments until you hear from them. Um, otherwise you might be sending the applicant in, in directions where the H R C sends them in a different way. So, um, in the interest of, of convenience to the applicants, they're not redoing things. You may want to, you know, give them your comments, give them some general things that you probably, you know, your, your thoughts from this evening. But I don't know if you want to really tool down on, on design comments until you get the H R C's.
That sounds good to me. I mean, there are principal things that I think we will have to comment on now.
Yeah, I at least want to understand where we all lie on concept and the, the general scheme of what's being shown, just the use in general. How it's laid out. Yeah, of course.
So, so my biggest concern here, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty serious concern. Um, you know, you described the first floor as the, the space where you touch and feel the building. The amount of, uh, interaction with, with parking is just completely unacceptable for downtown. There's, there's no, um, I, I can't imagine the impact that this would have on the feel of downtown Troy. Um, you know, especially when you, you, you brought up comparing it to the brick buildings that are there today. Um, you know, actually being able to see people in their offices who are working. I know this won't have offices. Um, but being more creative about, you know, wrapping that first floor with uses that are going to interact with, with street level and, and bring street life into Troy and not, um, out of Troy. It, that's, that's pretty much, it's pretty much it. I mean, I don't want to go too far into it. I think, I think the design has a long way to go in general. But I think for me specifically that, that, um, that's a huge problem with, with what's being presented.
It, yeah, if I could just talk, I mean, parking was a big consideration a year ago when we talked. There was a parking garage. Everyone wanted to know how many cars, especially with the loss of, you know, Sam Garage at that time. So the applicant firmly believed, based on previous discussions with the city, that, you know, even though it's not required, you clearly want to see as much parking as possible to accommodate people who are going to reside in these areas.
Well, I was not on the commission when that was brought up.
Sure.
And I would, I share a different opinion. And maybe my other commissioners can still have that opinion or what. But for me, it's not about how many parking spaces you can squeeze in there. But I also, I did see the, the design and I was actually a staff member who was working with the H R C at that time. And I remember, you know, this, this was when it was a totally different project. You have the other segment of the building on the northeast side. And there were multiple levels to parking and, and we got into conversations about how to screen those levels or. And that, you know, that whole trajectory was, was different than, than this. And I, I don't want to, um, I don't want to start to compare those two at all. It's not my intention. Um, really, my, my point is about interaction. Um, it's not about how many you squeeze in there.
It's about seeing the parking or the openness of it versus the amount of retail space?
That, that's a start. Yeah, it's, it's about seeing it. But also, um, we want to have, we want to have interaction. You know, we, we've seen plenty of examples inside Troy, outside Troy where it's screened. Um, you have, you know, there's a, there's like basically a hallway inside. Um, you know, like, um, on the corner of Congress and Fort, there's a new building, recent construction there that has that basically a liner and the space isn't used for anything. Um, that's a, that's a step in the right direction, but that's, that's not a positive really for our downtown. Again, kind of, kind of comparing it to what's there today and how you can interact with people who might be in their office. Or again, I know it's not going to be office use, so if it's going to be retail or even residential uh, on that first floor where somebody's in that building. So, you know, there's a real human being in there. You, we don't have to get into the, the nuances and implications of uh, planning and why that's a good thing. But, you know, we need to have that in our downtown. It can't be this, uh, sidewalk of, you know, this, this whole building, whole city block of, of cars right there.
You're talking about Vicina, right? And right behind the C D T A bus stop?
And I don't want to use Vicina as a, as the gold standard. It's, it's very far from it. But, but that's, that's one step, right?
Yeah, these were, these were comments that.
I think, and I don't like how that, how that works.
But the other example was Kings One, I think also had parking on the first floor. And there was, maybe it was frosted glass or opaque glass with lighting behind it. But all of those are not.
Those are nuanced details too, whether it's frosted or transparent or whether it's grated or whether it's open. Those are all nuanced, but really like the principle of it is like, you're interacting, are you interacting with a building that has people inside of it? Or are you interacting with like the fronts of, of vehicles? And for, you know, a twenty foot span or, or two, two stalls worth of, of parked cars, that's one thing, right? But we're talking about the entire, like, like three, three sides of a block. And then we're also talking about a big curb cut for ingress and egress. So, you know, it, it's going from a building that has people at all sides of it to be, being like two little pockets of, of retail and that, it basically needs to be flipped.
The ratio.
I would say, yeah.
I'd like to just jump into that, Chris, for one second. I don't know if I'm on or off. So if you look across the street at the Quack and Bush Building and all the buildings there, when you're a pedestrian, and this is what makes Troy really wonderful, you see life. When you look into a parking lot hidden by the, by grates or whatever you'd put there, it detracts entirely from the, the feeling of being. I, I think this is a huge improvement over the brick building that's there. And it's something to be celebrating that we're moving in a good direction. But you want, you want to recognize, I think, if I had a pen and I was an architect or an engineer, and I'm neither. But the idea is if you can engage the people of the city with a, a pedestrian area that says, hey, we're alive. This is great. People living upstairs, it adds density and interesting things to see. Then you've got a great building.
Sure.
Just of, so that's, I'm, I say.
I know you two understand it.
Yeah.
Right, like, you know, any, any design professional understands this. Um, the other, the other comment I, I had was, you know, I know that there's a dollar and cents game kind of happening here.
Sure.
And, um, one thing that was brought up with the last proposal was height. And, and, you know, they basically kept going up and up until, you know, people were like, I, I think attitudes around height are changing. And if, if that's something that, um, creates more opportunity within, you know, so let's say the first floor or other, other parts of the project. You know, that's something I would certainly welcome is, is the structure getting taller. I think that, that's totally fine.
Yeah, so portions of the last one, I think, were five stories, which is where, is where we're at now. So I think we're about, what, seventy five feet ish to the stair towers and stuff.
It's not, you know, it's not something that I, I need to see, but I'm just saying, like, if, if that's helpful.
Yep.
That's to, something I'm totally open to. But yeah, I think, I think that street level interaction is.
Yeah.
Super important.
Well, we'll talk to the applicant, take another whack at that for it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think basically what you're saying is like everything on Broadway, you'd like to see retail space there.
Oh, yeah.
Spaces twenty one through six.
I want to be careful with what I say too. It doesn't need to be retail space at all. You know, it, it can be, it could be residential. It could be, I know we're not talking about office or, or commercial space.
Habitive. Being activated from the street.
It needs to be activated and it's not just Broadway. It's third. And I would really like to see most of fourth as well. Um, I know, I know there are design challenges, but you guys are, are clever, I'm sure. Um, and it's, it's super important.
Do you guys, do you guys think you need the, the parking? Or was the parking done in an effort to? Address, address the planning, what you envisioned being planning commission. It was, it was both, right? It's an amenity, right? I mean, if I don't have to search for a spot on the street for twenty minutes, then that's certainly more desirable from a residential standpoint. And lugging my groceries right up through the lobby and the elevators makes, makes life a lot easier for me, right? So I, I think it was a, a function of both, right? We heard a lot of pushback about you're killing all the parking. And, and so even though we're not required to, we wanted to provide parking. But it's also an amenity to the residents.
You know, I, I drove by the, the murder of a, of parking on the, or I rode by the murder of parking on the way here. And, you know, that is on a different parcel and I don't think that has a, a, a real role in what we're talking about today. So I, I also want to point that out. Um, I understand people are drawing conclusions because they're, they're owned by the same applicant, but that's not, that's not something that's on, on.
No, I think it was the fact that those, those people who used that other parcel got dispersed to other areas of the city at that time. So there was a concern about available parking spaces generally within that area of Troy.
Right.
Not necessarily the applicant, so. So, but yes, I mean.
But we're judging, you know, this project on.
Sure, sure.
And the, the amount of parking, the layout of the parking specifically.
Yep.
Damages the, the merits of my.
Yeah, and, and like Ken said, I, I think we can take a look and, and try to redo maybe that section along Broadway. You know, I mean, we have retail space going up here and maybe we can do something here. Um, you know, this, this is activated. This is an amenity space for the people who live there. Same thing with our, you know, when you go along Fourth Street there, we have retail in that corner. We have our lobby area. Um, so, you, you know, they're, we'll totally hear you and we'll take another look at that.
Okay, um, I know the historic committee is going to look at this uh, and give you your recommendations. Uh, that's what I do for a living. So I, uh, just want to give you some broad comment. You got.
I'll hand it to the architect.
You have the Freer Building, you have the Quack and Bush Building, you have that whole row of, of, um, third across the street. Um, this doesn't, this has no relation to that. Um, for, I mean, I think you're surrounded by some of the best architecture in downtown Troy. And I don't think relating it by having marble colored, uh, whatever is, is enough. Um, I just think you, I, you gotta do something else. Uh, that's my broad comment and I'll leave it there.
Yeah, I mean, uh, first, I wholeheartedly echo what everything James and Bill said. To me, they, the area we're looking at here is the beating heart of Troy. And it's critical that whatever concept is brought is one that pulls people to it, through it and engages people with that space. I think that that is one of the most, uh, underutilized buildings and portions of Troy right now. It's just sitting there waiting for something great to be done with the space. So this is the chance to do it. Architecturally, I, I don't hate it. I don't think it's necessarily a perfect reflection or, um, pull through of the surrounding language, architectural language there. I think really the key for me to, to like the plan more, I actually don't, don't hate the idea of a curb cut on fourth to allow entrance for vehicles behind, uh, maybe that activated space. I'm going to say it again. I've said it for other projects, explore underground parking. I'm sure it's extremely cost prohibitive, but maybe a reduced footprint for that hearing that we don't need is, we're not looking for as much parking. Maybe it's an option to do a, a level or two un- under, uh, that space and have the entrance be off fourth as you're proposing. Um, but yeah, I guess, uh, uh, no need to reiterate. Otherwise, it's, it was said perfectly.
Yes, Emily, I also agree with James's comments. You know, I was on the commission for various iterations of this project. I've always been of the opinion that more parking downtown is not, well, we should be prioritizing particularly on this block, particularly, you know, on the street level. So, um, that's always been my view. I know different commissioners may, and, you know, it is a real concern that if you're going to build a lot of residential units where all of those cars going necessarily. But, you know, I, I do think we need to be very careful with what we do at the street level in the heart of downtown.
And again, the, the curb cut on fourth almost to me matches what's going on further up the street as, as you enter either the hotels parking lot or the, um, merge lane near Dino as you turn left up there. It's just right off fourth seems to be the inlet for a few of the structures already. So it wouldn't be too big of a change, a functional change for people as they're driving through the area.
Well, I wonder, I, I've been thinking about that. Uh, this is, uh, pretty subjective, so I don't want to sound like. Well, I wonder, I, I've been thinking about that. Uh, this is, uh, pretty subjective, so I don't want to sound like a hard comment for the applicant, but um, you know, does, does adding another one to Fourth make it the driveway road or does that, should it be diluted and put on Broadway or, or Third? And, you know, nobody wants to see Third tainted with a curb cut or whatever, you know, I'm like, I don't want to get too, too, uh, dramatic, but, um, there is one on, on Broadway now for the loading zone and it's, it's not, um, it's not that big of a deal because it's just one, but if you put, you know, you start adding them on Fourth is like, is the character of Fourth being lost? Um, I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I think it's debatable, but I think it's something worth considering in general. Um, the other consideration on Broadway is having that, that egress and ingress on, on Broadway is a, it's a longer driveway because you're, uh, you know, you have that city-owned land there and so it's a wider sidewalk that you're interrupting. But if you're going beneath the building, is that helpful because you can, you know, travel that? Go down.
Yeah, I can almost guarantee we're not going to go below the building. It's just the, 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 the cost and Mike can speak to this. Yeah, and we've looked at a lot of different options over the last eighteen months on this from a cost perspective from construction and just wasn't viable. We, what's that? And, right, there's, there's also something, right? Um, I can go back here and show you, but there's, there's a data line that goes right through here. Um, I think it's fiber, right? Yeah, it's, it's the Verizon fiber line cuts right through the building from Broadway.
Um, you know, you mentioned it was like thirty-three K per, uh, for parking space for the.
North of that, actually.
Yeah, and that didn't actually surprise me. I was like, yeah, that's, that's, that's what it costs a lot of the time, you know, and.
I, I'll go back ten years and maybe it's my gray hair, but it was like fifteen. Yeah.
Yeah, and then you also said there's no way to.
Thirteen, actually, in Lance Falls. Yes.
Was it that low?
Yes, it was.
I've never seen it below twenty and that's, I don't have any gray hair yet, I don't think.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten quite insane.
Uh, one more unrelated design question. Um, it's my trademark question. What are you doing with the roof space?
Right, well, right now we're not doing anything with space.
That's not how you answered.
Yeah.
I wanted to kind of round back on some of the comments that we heard and I don't know if anybody remembers, but like when we did, uh, one mine square proposal, we said that our concept was evolution, right? We went from a building number one, that was two stories, three stories, and we went through about the history of Troy. And then on the riverside, we talked about how, uh, you know, building number seven was looking towards the future. So this is your building looking towards the future. We're not going to replicate buildings that you have on the north or south side of the lot. We're actually trying to set, you know, like if you look at the city of London, now that's been around for two thousand years, you have a lot of modern architecture there. Um, what we're trying to do is something that's going to start to blend some of that, you know, that eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds architecture. And now we're looking for the evolution of Troy. We're looking for next step. We want you guys, you know, we want to pull you and, and kind of show some modern, um, building elements on a city block.
Is your, is your design the most recent one for one mine square? Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, that, um, project, the amount of emphasis that was put on it, but, you know, by the public and, and how it's treated as a extremely sensitive area. I mean, it, it's, it's, it goes just, just like that for this one as well. So, I mean, I, I, I liked that design. Um, and, and I understand the sentiment behind what you're saying and, you know, I think, I think this, this doesn't have to be the loudest statement piece or it doesn't have to be, uh, mimicking anything else. And I, I won't talk that much about architecture. He's sitting next to Suzanne because I don't know nearly as much, but, um, but yeah, I think, I think that, that's, that idea, that sentiment sounds all right to me. Um, but, you know, I think we, there's, there's other stuff that we need to see as well.
I don't think you have to do a, a Disney World recreation of what's there. But this is your classic five over one that's everywhere. And I just, you know, I can't make you do another kind of construction. I'm not even going to go there. But that looks like the one on, on Starbuck Island and it looks like the Vicina and it looks like King's Landing. I just, I just want something, you know, it can be modern. That's not the point. I mean, we lived with the atrium for god knows how long and, and, um, but I just want it to be a, a less of a generic design that they have in Dallas and, and New Jersey and wherever else they, everywhere else they build these things. So that's, that's, that would make me happy.
One thing I'll just say about the, the current atrium or that current brick building there is that it's, it's just simple and, and modest. And that feels good to me in some ways too. And again, this doesn't have to be a huge statement, doesn't have to be super modest. I'm not saying any of it, but it's just that people, you know, with comments like that, it's like, it doesn't have to be the most, you know, I don't, I don't hate how quiet the atrium is now, the design of it. And when we saw, um, when, when, what, what was that building or the Detroit Housing Authority building that got proposed, it was like, it's very quiet. Yeah, tailored. Um, it ended up being a little bit more pared down. Sometimes that, that works well in this busy architectural context, I think.
I like the notion of aspiring to set like an architectural trajectory or, uh, or something you're shooting for, for almost a benchmark or something for a look in Troy and using historical items to inform that. And in particular, I like the idea of pulling the marble look into the siding. Um, I think you, the idea is there. I get what you're going for. I think the execution has got to get revised. Um, I also like the, um, I don't know what the word is for the, the top, that cannot, yeah, your cornice, thank you. Um, it's escaping me. The, the notion of having that cornice, especially the way it reads to me here feels, it almost looks like it's floating, which has a cool effect to me in terms of setting a more modern look. Um, maybe somehow ornamenting it more or providing a little more instead of just a flat rectangle, doing something different there.
I don't know that I like the floating, but I, one thing that's really different with the, compared to the project we just saw was doesn't have all this like chatter, like roof chatter, like even though, even like the well now facilities, it's like, man, how many different boxes are we stacking on that? So you guys nailed that by not putting a million different line, roof lines on it. I think that's, that's important for me. It's like, you don't need to make it more, more buildings on top of one another. It's like, yeah. That's all, I, I should stop.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot more comments.
Yeah, we were told not to give architectural comments.
It's hard, it's hard because it's.
But we're trying to give.
It's like planned, it's like planned. It's essentially a rectangle in the middle of this thing, right?
From a engineering standpoint, there's not a lot.
Right, right. Um, yeah, you get some of the good projects, huh? But the, uh, um, I think, I think we should probably, yeah, uh, wait until we have HRC comments and then until, you know, Sarah's also available.
Oh, I have one, one last comment. One, one thing that I think would be a, a really beneficial, uh, improvement to downtown would be uh, adjacent to the project on, on the sidewalks, is doing some sort of pedestrian improvements. Um, you know, I know you have street trees here, which is great. Um, doing some sort of curb extension or something like this to make it safer to access the site from a pedestrian standpoint, um, I think would go a long way. So I just wanted to add that as well, uh, especially while we're in the, the earlier stages, something to keep in mind.
Maybe like pergola or some shade structure or something that.
Yeah, I mean, those are, those are also, uh, can, can contribute to traffic calming, but specifically for me, uh, referring to like reducing the crossing distance in the right of way, I think would be a, a helpful improvement. Um, that could be associated with this project. As you said, a lot of the sidewalk is going to get beat up. Um, so we know there's going to be sidewalk improvements that have to happen.
Yep.
Um, moving some curb would be, would be great too.
Sure. Just remember, we don't own that, so I just have to work with the city to find out what their amendment to.
Aaron can work with you.
I'm happy to work with Aaron on that.
What, what are you guys thinking about timeline wise? What was your hope for?
Yeah, so that's a great question and I appreciate it. So, um, of course, you know, um, the applicant wants to demo what's there sooner than later. Um, certainly, um, it's not, it's not really being used and, um, you know, he'd like to get that underway sooner than later. Part of this is, you know, part of the action is demolition of what's currently there. Um, so, I, I mean, ideally he'd like to start doing that as soon as possible and really would like to start building uh, by the spring. He's got, you know, going from ground up and maybe Mike can talk to the schedule, but it's fairly aggressive with his funding. So, um, you, you know, the, I, 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 you know, digesting the comments tonight, Ken and I have to go back to the drawing board, meet with the applicant, with Mike, run some numbers and, and see what we can and can't do to accommodate that activation along Broadway for sure. And then whatever else we might be able to do along Third or Fourth, that obviously still works with it. You know, we still have to go to HRC obviously and, and, and deal with materials and we want to get front of the HRC as soon as possible because of the fact that it's probably going to be two meetings. So, um, yeah, we're looking to move this forward very quickly. There's time around. So, um, yeah, he would like to demo. That's one message I got from him today that he would like to demo this as soon as possible, so. Correct.
But, well, you actually are, but, um.
Yeah. That's, no, no, right. Um, uh, but in this case, um, we would at least need, we, yeah, we would at least want the review of, of this to proceed a little bit before we go ahead and do that. Uh, mainly because we would need to, um, have the, the commission's approval for the condition that the atrium will be left in. And, um, you know, timing wise, if the atrium's going to be used this winter, uh, I don't, I don't know how that would work out exactly. So you'd have to consider that as well. Um, which requires council action, I believe, if there's an interruption in its use.
All right, anything else? Otherwise we got to do the lead agency declaration. Can you give me the language again? It's been a while.
It would be a motion, uh, it would be a resolution to, for, for an intent to declare lead agency.
So I resolve to, or I make?
No, I make a motion.
Okay.
Issue our intent to declare.
I make a motion that we issue our intent to declare ourselves lead agency for the atrium project. Review, secret review. Okay, moving to a vote, Bill.
I'm in favor.
Did, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, James.
Yes.
Suzanne, Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
So I just want to state that, uh, so involved agencies will include the city, include the city council, this is a parallel track with them. And because the next planning commission meeting is thirty days from tonight or less than thirty, less than thirty days from tonight, you won't be able to act at the next meeting as well. So plenty of time for the historicistic commission to review anytime.
Because of the thirty day period for other agencies.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we might as well get on cable this to the, uh, November meeting, right? I got you.
Well, we, we might want to.
We might want to have them back to review.
If they feel they'd be.
It's not like we'll be making any action, but if they, they get comments back from the HRC and then have time to.
So let me ask the applicant, would, would you guys like to come again for the October meeting or do you think it makes more sense to?
Yeah, I mean.
Wait for.
Sure. You would think the last time we had none. No, I know. Yeah, no, I, why don't we keep us, yeah, I, 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 I think keeping us on the agenda would, would be good and if for some reason we have to pull it at the last minute, then we'll pull it. But, you know, I think if nothing else, and Ken and I can go back with the client, we can talk about, you know, the changes that we talked about tonight and maybe have something to present to you. Even, even if it's at a concept level, just to show you what, what we're thinking, that would be helpful. Again, because we have kind of an aggressive schedule, ideally.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you everyone for your time.
Yeah, we have to.
I'll make a motion table.
To the October.
To the next meeting.
Need a second. Okay, moving to vote, Bill.
Yes.
Suzanne, Anthony.
Yes.
And yes. All right, Washington carries.
Make a motion to, uh, Jerry.
Second, uh, Bill, or I'll say aye.
I'll as in favor.
Aye.
You gotta learn some of those catch. It's catch all.